I believe I'm ready to go whenever you guys are.
Mayor Grisanti, you are muted.
I am unmuted. Yay. I'd like to call to order this, the Malibu City Council regular meeting of May 26, 2021. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate the Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during the meeting, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record in the public. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Councilmember Euring.
Here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein.
Here.
Mayor Grisanti.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Will you join me in pledging allegiance to the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Anyway, have a roll call.
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Euring.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein.
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti.
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 14, 2021.
Wonderful. We have a ceremonial presentation, a proclamation declaring May 2021 as Building Safety Month. I guess we're a little late on that. Is there, uh, who will be delivering the proclamation? Me? I guess it is me. Whereas the city continues to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, water conservation, and sustainability in the built environment that affect our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster and whereas building safety and fire prevent prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, labors, and others in the construction industry work to ensure the safe construction of buildings and as members of the International Code Council, develop and implement the highest quality codes to protect the Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play, and whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building, safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most US cities, counties, and states to protect the public from natural disasters such as wildland fires, earthquakes, floods, hurricanes, and snowstorms, and whereas prevent, repair, protect, building code save, the theme for Building Safety Month 2021, which is sponsored by the International Code Council, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe, resilient, and sustainable construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water conservation, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementing implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Malibu does hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Building Safety Month and encourages its citizens to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the service provided by the, by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives, lives and properties. Senior permit services technicians Julie Bauer and Mary Ann Riggins will accept the proclamation. Julie and Mary Ann have served our community for over 14 years and have lived in Malibu even longer. They are the first faces that the public sees when they walk into City Hall. They set a precedent for excellent customer service with their patience, timeliness, listening skills, and overall generally friendly attitude. Genuinely friendly attitude. Their hard work and professionalism in these difficult times has helped to keep the rebuild projects moving forward. These two have been in City Hall daily since the Woolsey Fire and during the ongoing pandemic. We are proud to see them here accepting this proclamation on behalf of the Building and Safety Division. Their commitment and dedication to the city goes above and beyond the call of duty. So I don't know if there's somebody there to actually hand it to you. How about some applause? Thank you Julie, thank you Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Thanks Julie.
Kelsey, I see you. Are you applauding? Yes, you are. Very good. Okay. Do we have a, I guess, I guess the actual presentation is being made somewhere in actual real life and not in the digital stage. So we'll get it to you. Uh, is Deputy City Attorney Christine Wood available to give us an update on school district separations?
I am Mary Grisanti. Thank you very much and good evening, council. Um, I appreciate so much the opportunity again to present to you a little bit of an update. I know we just had your full attention last week, so I won't take, and you have a very busy agenda full of numbers, so I won't take up a lot of time today. I just wanted to give you a brief update on one aspect of school separation. Um, actually, Councilmember Silverstein, um, one of your questions last week um, is directly related to this particular update, so we're briefly, I'm going to tell you that on May 13th, um, the three finance experts from the city met with the finance expert with the district to go over the pre, um, the proposals and with some very deep analysis of the financial terms of each type of proposal so that we could get a better understanding of where there was disagreements and where there were agreements. Um, the real idea was that there, there, this wasn't really an attempt to negotiate, but seeing that it felt like we were talking past each other with some of our negotiations and some of our public comments. So this was an opportunity with no attorneys or staff present for the financial consultants to get together and talk. Um, and so Kathy Domenico, the managing partner from Capital Public Finance Group, um, is going to give you a summary of that meeting. We also have a written memo to the ad hoc committee that we will email to the council and post on the city's website after this meeting, um, and then after Kathy gives her brief review of the memo, um, Kathy Domenico and Latonya Kirk Carter, the other financial consultants, are both on the call to answer questions. Um, so that is all of my contribution for this evening. I thank you and I'm turning it over to Kathy.
Hi everyone, and it's great to see everyone again. And after last week, I, I hope everyone's recovered from the property tax study session. Um, as Christine mentioned, I just wanted to give you a brief overview of some of the key points that we discussed with the school district's financial consultant named Shin Green um, at our May 13th meeting. Um, predominantly, the meeting was actually to discuss the city's most recent proposal to the school district. So we did not spend a lot of time going through the school district's proposal. It was more focused on getting their consultant, uh, providing him with a better understanding of what we intended through our proposal. So we, uh, gave him a pretty thorough overview of our methodology and went through some of the spreadsheets related to how we were calculating the allocation of funding between the two future separated districts and, um, the basis for our proposal, which as you recall, includes the splitting of the property tax revenue based on geography. And a little true up, in the event that Santa Monica USD is not basic aid, we would make the state whole with a property tax transfer. And then a third layer, which is that we would make Santa Monica USD whole in the event that one of their other local funding sources drops below current funding levels. So we went through that methodology with him. Um, it was clear that, and we did agree, that the way that the school district was actually interpreting our proposal was not what the city had intended. So it did result in some calculations that you actually have seen out in public from the school district that raised a lot of concerns on their part with some pretty large numbers. Um, we described, first of all, the, um, the math problem related to LCFF funding, that local control funding formula, and how it would apply. And we were doing it differently, so the way that the city had been doing the calculation and intended for the calculation to be done through the proposal is not the way that the school district had interpreted that. Furthermore, the way that the, um, city had intended for the property taxes to be distributed was not the way that the school district's consultant was interpreting the property taxes. And that was a very important point that resulted in a significant discrepancy in the funding. Again, as you recall, we are proposing that the property taxes would be split by geography with the tax rate areas serving each future district being the ones that actually contributed the property taxes to that district. So it would be on a geographic basis by tax rate area. Um, the school district consultant had been dividing up the property taxes based on the percentage of assessed value within each territory. And because of a lot of nuances, the share of the property tax being different from one district to the next, and also the existence of redevelopment, that was not resulting in, um, an equitable distribution based on what we had intended. Further, the school district was projecting future property tax revenue as if the two districts were going to continue to be merged. So we're essentially projecting, uh, Malibu, Malibu's future property tax revenue as part of Santa Monica. We agreed that we were not projecting things in the same way, but there was a significant disagreement as to number one, whether property taxes could even be allocated the way that the city was proposing. The school district's consultant does not feel that it can be. And furthermore, and I think the crux of the concern was that, as you recall from the workshop, the property tax amount for each local agency was set based on what the budget was for that entity back in the late seventies. And the school district's consultant was concerned that there would be no equitable way to divide up those revenues today. Of course, the city's team is, believes that we can allocate the property taxes by geography and again disagrees that those, that pre nineteen, uh, pre Prop 13 allocation would be material, especially since you recall the school district was likely in the part of the revenue limit formula where they actually were backfilled from the state just as they were all the way up until 2018 when they became basic aid. So that was kind of the crux of the discussion, but there were a couple of additional items discussed, but I just want to bring to your attention, more detail will be in that memo that Christine referenced. One was on redevelopment funding. We actually did get full agreement on both of our interpretations related to redevelopment funding, so that was a positive that came out of the meeting. Um, we discussed Serrano Priest, and many of you may have heard some public comments that school district superintendent and leadership has been making about Serrano Priest. We asked Mr. Green to clarify those comments and provide us with some more detailed information about what exactly would be in violation of Serrano Priest based on the city's proposal. Ultimately, um, Mr. Green indicated that, um, the, this separation could create a precedent for wealthy communities or a specific high property value segment of a community to separate in a school district in order to form a wealthy school district with high property tax revenues and low students, this low student population. So essentially, they are afraid of the precedent that this would set. Of course, your consulting team was adamant that the driving factor behind this reorganization is not property values and wealth, it's academic performance and local control. Um, so this precedent, this hypothetical precedent is not really the driving force behind reorganization. We did agree, the consultants agreed, that the argument was based on a hypothetical scenario, uh, but it's not clear on whether Mr. Green agreed with us that this would not set a precedent. And then finally, um, the last topic we discussed was, um, more public comments in a newspaper ad related to programmatic cuts totaling 19 million that the school district has identified. The city's consulting team wanted to understand those numbers and asked us, asked, uh, Mr. Green to actually show us the calculation of where they came up with the 19 million. Um, ultimately, it's not clear where the 19 million came from. Um, both our team and Mr. Green concluded and agreed that the school district only received excess property taxes of just under $4 million in the current fiscal year. And we, we were not able to identify the source of the $19 million. Um, so again, we, the city's consulting team reiterated that we did not see that there would be a decline in programs that would result in 19 million. And, uh, the city, that's right, the school district's consultant did not provide evidence to the contrary. So it, that's really where we left it, and frankly, that was the end of the conversation after about two and a half hours. Um, the memo will provide you with more detail and, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. I know that was a brief overview, but, uh, I wanted to be mindful of all your time.
I want to thank you for, uh, for providing the information and I, I'm sure that it made it just a little clearer to the other side. And I hope that one day they wake up and see the beauty of your position. Our position, rather.
Kathy, I just want to say thank you for your expertise and for your infinite patience.
Are there any questions? Thank you ladies. We're going to move on to the next item on the, oh, wait, Steve, Steve Euring has a question.
Let me just make sure, just, I, 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 how does this impact what Laco is doing in their study? Does this, does this go to them? Does this impact any of their decision-making process?
Um, Christine, do you want to take that?
Um, so Councilmember Euring, that this particular meeting was much more important in terms of the negotiations that go, um, continue, um, more so than, um, does it impact or what we found out, does it impact, um, the Laco process? Remember, Laco is hearing from us in terms of our petition, they're hearing from this, um, the district in terms of their petition, and then Laco has now hired a consultant, School Services of California, to, to provide them a feasibility assessment of whether or not it's possible to erect an independent Malibu Unified School District completely independent of either of our proposals. Um, and that consultant will then make a recommendation to Laco about the feasibility of an independent Malibu Unified School District. So the conversations we were having with the, with Mr. Green were really just to aid our ongoing attempt to negotiate with the district.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Will the consultant be talking to our team as well or just working from the written documents submitted?
You know, I, I don't know if Latonya wants to weigh in on this because she's talked to, um, she has a little bit more insight, but from what I think that they've told her is that they won't actually, um, talk to us unless they have some specific questions. I don't even know how much of our proposals that they're looking at, they're doing a completely fresh start for Laco, um, which we think is which we think is fine because as school finance people, they're likely to start with LCFF and look at other local revenues, just like we did. It's not going to be this kind of amalgamation of of a formula and a new methodology. So but they're not at this point going to be looking at our materials. Latonya, is that your understanding?
Yes, that's what they, the School Services of California indicated to me when I talked to them a few weeks ago that they would reach out to us. They know us. We've worked with them before in other iterations, other districts, districts and things like that. And so they know our expertise, but that they would be giving the Laco County Committee an independent assessment of if the Malibu School District and the Santa Monica School District could stand alone.
Thank you. Karen?
I have a question. I don't know if if any of you want to take a guess at this or if you, if you see the likelihood. But if if the county committee thought it was a good idea to impose a third-party arbitrator despite Santa Monica's to-date unwillingness to go that route. Do you see that as likely to happen?
No, I don't.
They would probably want us to
I was just gonna say, they made it really clear to us that they feel like it's their role to advise the county committee, Laco staff's role to advise the county committee as to the feasibility of this proposal. And then, you know, it's not their job to help us come to an agreement or to reach, reach an agreement. There's a statutory process for how to erect a school district. And it's their job just to make sure we're following the rules and meeting the feasibility standards. Sorry, Latonya, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's what I was gonna say, is that it's up to us if we are able to come to some agreement with them between us and Santa Monica. It would actually be to, I think, Santa Monica's benefit to come to an agreement with us and maybe after much more education, we'll get there and get back to the table and have some fruitful negotiations. But it is not Laco's responsibility to make us agree.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to move on to written and oral communications from the public.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
You have four speakers tonight for items not on the agenda. They are Jamie Tierney, Judith Israel, Terry Davis, and John Maza. We'll hear from Jamie first.
Thank you. Are you there, Jamie?
Jamie, you should be seeing a pop-up asking you to unmute. Jamie, you are unmuted now if you want to begin your comment.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Thanks. Yeah, so I I read an article about Surf Rider Beach for SAB magazine a few weeks ago. And we, I was, I listened to the meeting last week or two weeks ago, I believe. So there was a big swell at Surf Rider Beach this weekend, and I've heard that the erosion is is worse than, worse than ever. When I was researching the article, I found out that that twenty years ago, they used, used to use a tractor to move the sand around. Historically, the, the, the waters come out at the top of the point up near Malibu Colony. But for the last twenty years, it's migrated down towards where the Adamson House is. And that's created a problem where the erosion just gets worse and worse and worse as it, as it comes out of the Adamson House and scours the coast. So now the the water is near the parking lot and the wall there, and it's threatening to take out the lifeguard tower as well. So I was just wondering if what, if there's any, I don't know what the process is to try to get the the tractors back to work again, because when the the tractor carves out the the top of the of the point there by by the colony, what happens is, is the sediment comes out, it filters around the entire point, and that that creates a much larger beach, and that helps the erosion problem as a whole. But my understanding is, is there's, there's a problem in terms of getting the permitting to get the tractors back there and to get to move the, move the sand around. But it seems to me like it's something that could be done pretty cheaply and easily. Last year, I know that they've moved fifty tons of granite where the, where the lifeguard tower is, and that only, you know, I'm sure that's pretty expensive and and not easy to do, and that only makes the problem worse because it the the water moves around the rocks and just scours out erosion more. So that's just my question, is if there's a way to go back to the tractor solution to to make the breach point come out of the top of Malibu Colony. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie.
Our next speaker is Judith Israel.
Hi, Judith, are you there?
Okay, sorry, I had to unmute. I just wanted to see if Alex got my slides and was able to use them. Oh, yeah. Okay, great. And Brett's, Brett's gonna read, speak for me. He's gonna read. My.
Good evening, members of the city council and staff. The Malibu Lagoon needs immediate attention. It is completely filled to the brim and blanketed with yellow algae blooms. The lagoon was breaching into the ocean up until three weeks ago, and now the amount of algae is alarming. If it doesn't breach all summer, tens of thousands of fish will suffocate, die, float to the surface and stink just like four years ago. The only reason it didn't happen last year was because although it was full of algae, it breached on a full moon. In two days, May twenty-six, a full moon, eight and a half foot high tide with four to five foot surf could possibly breach the lagoon and pour tons of contaminated water into the ocean as it happened last year. Last July, either naturally or by surfers, Surf Rider beaches where LA County Health Department's red flag is contaminated and unhealthy to swim in for two entire months. This is tragic for beachgoers and the Malibu businesses, but it is publicly announced that all Malibu Surf Rider beaches are contaminated. I'm pleading with the city, who contractually with FEMA has control of the Malibu food plains to demand that state parks get rid of the algae threat, which is what they promised to do with the restoration, and now it's a worse problem. Also, when is the city going to do its own lagoon independent engineering study to get answers and solutions? I believe it should breach all year. Furthermore, please tell state parks to maintain the lagoon. It is covered with dead and overgrown flammable native plants. And because they didn't plant non-flammable ones, they are a fire hazard to the hundred thirty homes that State Park abuts.
And, and I wanted to say that this counters what the last speaker said. We, right now, it would be great if the lagoon was opened all year, if there was a breach, as it has been up to three weeks ago, the wa, the lagoon was clear, the water was fine. Now it's blanketed with algae. And I don't think you can open the breach now. Well, I know you can't because all that water would come into the ocean, and as I said, contaminate it like it did last year. So it's a dilemma. And that's all I have to say. But I have more pictures. I don't know if you can show them.
Who's tide chart?
Oh, here's the tide chart, and you can see that you can see where the tide's going to be. The high tide is going to be on the full moon on May twenty-sixth. I just wanted to show it to you. So and that's the high watermark yesterday. So it'll go up another foot and a half, which will go into the snowy plovers habitat, which is protected. So there's a lot of, and this is state parks. This is just a fraction, a small fraction of the dried dead brush all over the lagoon.
Judith, that's your time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Judith. Thank you, Brett. Do we have someone else?
So our next speaker would be Terry Davis, but I don't see her in the meeting right now, so we'll go to John Maza and try to circle back.
Thank you. John, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, this is all coming together, all the other speakers. I'm speaking on behalf of the Adamson House Foundation, for which I'm a member tonight. And first, we'd like to announce that we have a soft opening that started last week. Our museum is open, the grounds are open. The house itself will not be open until we get more permission from the state. But we're glad to be back after a year and we're trying to make it really nice. Now, to get on to what is the other speakers talked about, the Adamson Houses Foundation has just funded an eighty thousand dollar study with the state to study the hydrology around the Adamson House, because we are in fact losing our front yard and our side yards, and part of them have collapsed already. It's a very bad situation since that's a major part of the house, having a front yard, as you can imagine, or even having a house. Now, a couple of years ago, this, the city came out with an RFP asking to fund a hydrological study of the whole lagoon. And really, nothing's happened at all. So we'd like to have you rev that program up and take some of your funds out of your budget this year and start it. We are in a situation where we almost lost the wall last year. We could lose the highway at some point, which is, would be a major problem. The house itself is in real danger. And as you can tell from the other speakers, there's not many other solutions other than do a global study to figure out how to get the water to flow in the right direction. So these are our three main state parks in the center of Malibu and our major historical building that's open to the public along with the pier. If we have a eighty-three type storm this year, we're gonna lose it. And it could come along any year. These kind of things take four to five years just to get rolling and another four to five years to do something about it. As you well know from the last lagoon rebuild. So I really hope you reprioritize some of the other things in your budget and come up with some money to get this process started. Unless it's started, it will never happen. And it doesn't take a huge amount of money to start it, but it's taking us eighty thousand dollars just to do the front hydrological study of the Adamson House. The whole lagoon and all that, it will take more. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
So Mayor Grisanti, I still don't see Terry Davis in the meeting under that name. We do have one unnamed user. If you wanted us to try and see if that was Terry, otherwise we'd be done with public comment.
If you want to try and contact the unnamed user, let's do that, and then we'll go on.
Terry, if you're here, you should be seeing a pop-up asking you to unmute. We're not getting a response, so that concludes public comment on the item.
Thank you very much. Do we have any commission or committee updates?
You don't have any commissioners signed up.
Okay. I see Steve McClary. Do we have a city manager update?
We do. Thank you, Mayor Grisanti, members of the council. First thing I'd like to report on is the matter of the fence at La Costa Beach. Staff has reached out to staff with the state, with MRC, also with the coastal commission staff. We did have a discussion with the MRC staff recently and relayed the numerous concerns that the city and the community has with the removal of the fence in terms of the increased access and the the safety of being able to get in and out of that point. Also, the concerns with traffic and parking. And of course, just as we're coming into a busy summer season. We're still researching and looking into the matter, doing all that we can to get all the facts and information that we have. And again, trying to do our best in terms of making the case with MRC. And at this point, we're waiting to to hear back from them and again, doing a little, little further study and homework. And in the meantime, we would just like to encourage the public, if they are having issues there, especially the residents, if they're seeing problems that are occurring there, if they would reach out to necessary, if people are committing crime, obviously. Please contact the sheriff's department, or if there are other issues, if you could let the the MRC or the state of California know. But we're continuing to work on that and we'll keep you updated as that moves forward. Just briefly, we did receive reports at about six o'clock of a relatively small fire in the Palisades area. This is different than the incident that occurred the weekend before. Right now, there is no current threat to Malibu, but that is likely to be impacting Pacific Coast Highway as they are working on getting that fire under control. LA County Fire and LA City Fire are on scene. And it is, I don't have any acreage total on that right now, but it doesn't appear to be a very large fire at this point. So we'll of course monitor that and keep the public apprised as as that may change. But right now, just looking at some traffic impacts on PCHs through Malibu. And much in line with that, this last week, I did meet both with the sheriff's department representatives to get to know them and understand their operations a little bit better. And also met with the personnel, the personnel with the fire department as well. And obviously, some very top-notch folks there, as I know the council knows. And it's nice to know that the city is in such good hands there. And planning to come out this weekend, I am planning to come out this weekend with the police. Hopefully, that's the plan, to see what they do and see some of the impacts and everything that they're doing to help keep the community safe as we get into these busy summer months. And then we are continuing to work on a plan towards reopening City Hall. Again, throughout the pandemic, Malibu City Hall has been open to the public through appointment, and we are continuing to provide that service. And I know at some point we'd like staff recommending that we come to council at some point with with that plan and also have some discussion with city council in terms of how you would like to be handling your meetings going forward as we start moving into these, into an era of relaxed COVID regulations. It's kind of hard to believe, but we are starting to get to that point. And of course, we want to do it as safely as possible. Was that always at the top of our minds? That is all that I have for my report. Of course, I'm available for any questions. And our police lieutenant is also available to give a brief report to you this evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is Lieutenant Braden in the, in the meeting? Jim, are you available to speak to us now?
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. The, I'll start off with the murder, murder investigation going on. And basically, on Friday afternoon about four twenty-five, we received a call to the Windy Way area, about twenty-seven thousand PCH, twenty-seven thousand five hundred PCH. Deputies found a male in a truck. And he had a gunshot wound. And basically, fire responded. The deputies secured the scene and the area, checked the area. We had a large volume of deputies respond. And the scene was held for homicide. The, the victim was not transported. He was pronounced dead at the scene. The evidence was collected there. The homicide investigation is ongoing. And I know a lot of people would like, oh, I'd like to know this, that, and the other thing. Homicide investigations are not like that. So this investigation is ongoing through our homicide bureau. And homicide bureau is also looking for any information they can get from anyone in the public that may help them in any way. And that number's three, two, three. And that number's three, two, three, eight, ninety, fifty-five hundred. And Lieutenant Dean is in charge of the investigation. The, any statements released in additional to identity, to anything else of this victim are made by homicide bureau. So I know a lot of people want to know things about it, but that's just not the way a homicide investigation is. The, as far as the male that was arrested, Kitty that was arrested at Zuma Beach with the guns, he remains in jail. His next court date is the twenty-first of June. And I'll keep you updated on that also. I'm open for any questions, so anyone may have.
I don't see any hands. I want to thank you for what you're doing to try and take care of us and, and all your guys. And I appreciate especially the responsiveness that you've given to the people who have a problem with oversized vehicles and thank you.
Well, on all the oversized vehicles, we'll continue to hammer away at that. Unauthorized, unpermitted car shows will continue to hammer away at that. And I think I stepped on a few toes the other day. Calling a few people that have been tied to the forming of these different things, even though they don't want to acknowledge that they are forming car shows and they're unauthorized. So I had a lawyer screaming at me on the phone the other day for one of the individuals. The, but I'll continue to express that any car shows or any large events in Malibu have to be permitted. And along with those permits come the responsibility for insurance, comes the responsibility for proper safety, security personnel, or hiring police personnel. And these, the people need to realize that these pop-up things that they want to act like no one organizes. No, we're gonna seek the organizers and seek payment for the services that require for these events. They create, large gatherings can be very dangerous. I think most of you probably saw in Huntington Beach over the last few nights, they had problems with parties. And they basically, from TikTok, they had thousands of people respond and go to a party, which got out of hand, which required hundred fifty police officers from all over Orange County and resulted in hundred fifty arrests one night, and then that was enough because the next night, there was still twenty-nine arrests. So, those kind of things, we try to stay on top of. Anyone that gets information on anything on the internet or anything else about possible events, if they can pass them on to us, we appreciate it. When we do know about things, even if it's some unpermitted event that may occur, we put a plan into place to try to mitigate any safety issues for the community. And that's like you guys putting the beach team out there and everything else, we do the same with that. So we want to be responsive to the community. I extremely appreciate the city council, the Public Safety Commission, and citizens of Malibu for realizing, like in this day and age, it's important to provide enough security and, and policing efforts in your community and putting enough guys out there to where we can mitigate some of the issues for the community and keep it a pleasant, peaceful, and safe community.
Thank you, Jim. I see we have, Bruce Silverstein has a question. Bruce?
Look at that, the hand raising now works. Thank you, Paul. Jim, thanks for all you're doing. I know we have some residents who can be some tough customers and they've, they've been impressed with what you and your folks have been doing. And as for the car show getting along, folks, you know, it's not like you arrested them. So you, you asked somebody who claims that they weren't to be responsible to not do it, if they weren't gonna do it, they're not gonna do it. And if they were the ones that were gonna do it, good for you, you alerted them. So I appreciate everything you've done.
I appreciate that, Bruce.
Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to city council subcommittee reports. Does anybody want to report on anything? Does anybody want to, oh, Karen, I'm sorry, there you are.
All right, just a couple of things. Last week, I attended the monthly COG meeting. As was mentioned earlier by our school district separation consultants, we had the special council meeting, the study session on school district property tax funding. And I just want to say for anybody who wants to see that, I know it might sound boring, but it was incredibly informative. And I would love to have more people in the community be educated on that whole realm. We all learned a lot. It's available on the city website. I don't know if we can put the link up on the screen, but let's see, Steve, do you know where they can find that link?
I can help if you go to malibu city dot org slash agenda center. The video is linked from there.
Thanks, Kelsey. And then, just a bright spot of community news. On Friday, there was the Malibu High School new admin classroom, library building ribbon cutting. And that was a really big deal. Those bonds that paid for it were passed in two thousand six and two thousand twelve. Now the building is finished and ready to be occupied. So that was really, that was a big deal. It was such a long time in coming. So I just want to say, we, once in a while, there's some good news. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Karen. I see Mikey Pearson, and then Steve, you're in.
I noticed Terry Davis is here. I don't know if she's been here all along, but I see her hand up. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, we'll get to her when you're, when Steve's done. How's that?
Okay, I just wanted, it's up to you. You're the mayor. So, what did I do last couple of weeks, or a week and a half, really? I went to the MRC grant meeting, our event, it was at the where the Animal Crossing is gonna be on the one-on-one freeway. And it was, it was actually pretty good. Henry Stern was there, Richard Bloom was there. I was part of the team representing arson watch and which got a grant also for radio. So it was a good event. They planted some, Henry gave a really passionate speech, I must say. The guy's a gifted public speaker. So, that was, that was positive. There was grants being handed out for resiliency and everything to do with fire prep. And Henry talked about sort of this being ongoing funding. That's the plan with the state every year, so we can keep, keep up on these different programs that people are doing this, as we know, as you might probably know, you saw the city of Malibu got a grant also, and good event. On the fire follower program, we've been discussing for a number of months, we're actually getting much closer to it actually maybe really actually happening, which is kind of amazing. We're down just a couple more people that have to check off yes and starting to feel hopeful. The name of the program has slightly changed. I think it's called Brigades now, Malibu, no, it's what's it called? It's got a name, it's the word brigade and it sounds pretty cool. There'll be different brigades identified by their neighborhood, like the Point Doom Fire Brigade, the Malibu West Fire Brigade, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that seems to be going well. I was also in a virtual meeting with Assemblyman Bloom last week, and there was only about six of us there. So it was a great chance to spend a little time with, with Richard Bloom. Mostly, I ended up talking to him about what it's like to be a small city trying to deal with homelessness and how they're really, for a small city that is sort of just dealing with it, not at the center of it, you, you don't really feel like you get any help. You know, you ask everyone their opinion, they tell you get something done, and they pretty much leave you on your own. So I just want to give them that impression that I think a lot of small cities really struggle to find a path. And my personal opinion, don't really get a whole lot of help. So I was able to share that. The Malibu, the high school, middle school ribbon cutting was actually really cool. That building is, it's kind of resembles a small college building. It has that vibe, sort of. It's very modern, but it's great spaces. There are different method of learning than when I was young, that's for sure. Everything's sort of movable and there's a lot of natural light, solar panels up top. And this huge quad created there that was never there before, which you can tell is a great hangout for the kids. And everyone was sort of envisioning, you know, this is a long-term project, there's just a couple of buildings done, but envisioning what this campus is gonna look like is really, really exciting. It's gonna take a while, but this is gonna be an incredible, incredible campus when it's completely done. And that was, that was pretty exciting to be there. And other than that, Bruce and I have started slowly the process of looking for recruiting firms to talk to related to a permanent city manager. We have not really gotten anywhere yet, but we have started the process and reviewed some proposals. And that's about where we're at. And I think that is my main report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Steve?
Yeah, just a very quick, over the week, last week, I got a calls from some of the residents down at La Costa and Carbon Beach. And Steve, I'm just wondering, when you met with the MRC, did you get any indication they were willing to try and fix any of that, or is this just, are we just talking?
Um, no, we did not get any commitment from MRC to do anything at this point. We did ask if they could consider putting up a temporary fence, but we did not get any commitment from MRC in the meeting.
Mikey, at the last meeting, you were gonna talk to Henry Stern about that. We, we get any?
I have, I, am I off mute? Yeah, I have been unable to get a hold of Henry Stern. I have, hopefully, the next day or so, but it's, you know, he's in legislature, legislation season and I have failed to do that despite repeated trials.
Yeah, and, and all, you know, and it just seems strange to me that we know we've got a problem there. We know the problem is very dangerous. We know that, you know, if left alone in the course of the summer, it, it could result in some serious accidents. I just think we should try and do something, okay? And I don't know what that something is. You know, put up signs there that say, be careful, you know, if you get hurt, here's Joe Edmondson's home number, call him. But something that at least alerts the visitors there that this is a dangerous situation. So, you know, Steve, if you, maybe next week, if we don't get any response from MRC, I may bring back an item to the agenda to see if there's any appetite on the council to try and do something. I mean, we're not gonna solve it, but maybe we can save a couple of lives. That's all I got.
Thank you, Steve. We're gonna interrupt the normal order for a moment and have Terry Davis speak to us. We tried to speak to you earlier, Terry, and you were unavailable, but I see your hand is up. Can someone unmute Terry, Teresa Davis?
Oh, here we go. I've been here from the beginning, but I was on YouTube. I apologize.
Well, I made that mistake once.
Oh, now I have to find, oh my goodness, how do I get out of this to, to read what I wanted to read? Oh goodness, stand, here we go. Sorry, sorry. You'd think after a year and a half, I would have Zoom under control. I did actually send this to all the city council members. Good evening, Mayor and city council staff and everyone else. My name is Terry Davis. I am president of the Big Rock Mesa Property Owners Association. Of course, in Malibu, fires are greatest danger and fire prevention and protection are greatest challenge. Big Rock continues to seriously address this issue with community education, vigilant community brush clearance, street teams, our own team of certified home ignition inspectors. And yes, Mikey, we too are working on that fire brigade. And thanks to the city's help, our three generators will help ensure water to fight fires during a PSPS. There are a few elements, though, that we can look at to address to fortify our prevention activities. And I know that none of these are new to you, but one, follow-up enforcement. Two, inclusion of additional items in the home hardening assessments. For example, objects and structures that can pose a danger to life and property. And three, offer help to those who are financially challenged to make those changes and strengthen city codes and penalties for those who are unwilling to comply. In terms of follow-up, we know that limited staff means limited follow-up. In the past, we in Big Rock have reached out to our local fire department, offering our help in this arena to follow up with residents who have been cited with violations. We continue to be willing to work with the fire department and the city in this regard. We worked closely with Jerry Vandermeulen, former fire liaison. And I look forward to establishing a relationship with Chris Bressard, with whom I have spoken recently. To date, home ignition assessments do not address items such as impaired thatched roofs, peeling paint, or other conditions that can pose a serious threat, not only to the homeowner, but to the community, especially if that home is located within a known fire corridor. It is my understanding that staff is working to update and strengthen some city codes. Perhaps the nuisance code for one can be enhanced to include these additional fire hazards. Another challenge we face is off-site homeowners dealing in long-term rentals who refuse to properly maintain or update their properties, posing threats on several levels. These codes could be strengthened to hold those owners accountable with possible liens placed on properties owned by the violators. Number three, there are those in Malibu who are experiencing financial challenges and insurance companies are certainly not particularly friendly to Malibu residents. Perhaps with available emergency and CAL FIRE grant money, we can set up a tier system to help residents make the necessary changes and upgrades that will in turn help save lives, property, and of course, money. It's been almost thirty years since Big Rock burned and we don't ever want it to happen again. Thank you all for all that you have done and thank you in advance that all, for all you will do. We in Big Rock are willing to do all we can to partner with the city and the fire department to keep Big Rock and all of Malibu safe. And next time, I will not have a problem with getting on Zoom.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Bruce, do you have any updates for us?
Yeah, thanks, Paul. So, you know, I finally got to get out of the house this week after being vaccinated. If you haven't gotten vaccinated yet, please do. It helps all of us. And having gotten out, I got to, I went to city hall, met with Steve and Lisa. We had a budget meeting for, for my edification, so I could be better educated tonight to speak about the budget and not take as much of the public's time doing so. I am now on a weekly afternoon, a weekly call with CalSTRAT, with, with Paul and learned a lot actually last week about what they do and how they help our city. So I'm, I'm gonna be interested to see what, how that plays out over the course of the coming year. Of course, we all participated in the special meeting last week on school separation, did that, went to the opening of the middle school. You know, pretty much things I did, other people have already discussed as well, because a lot of us were doing many of the same things. Spent a lot of time emailing and, and speaking on the phone with residents about various issues. The, the big issues in the past two weeks have been the fence at La Costa and Carbon. And there, there are some behind-the-scenes discussions going on. And I'm actually hopeful that there, there may be a meeting with the MRC to discuss what can be done in a amicable way that's, that satisfies everybody. I may be naive, maybe I just haven't been around long enough and dealt with them. But I, I sensed a desire to find a way to solve this and, and actually desire to have a meeting, so I hope that that will occur. Lot of people always talking about homelessness situation, not, not about what we can do for the homeless, but how we can make sure that the community is best protected from the unfortunate consequences that some of the homeless bring to our city. And a lot of, a lot of pushback, and I seem to be becoming the unofficial representative for those who are opposed to having a shelter in town. But so I, I, I hear from the people who are opposed to it, and I hear from a lot of them. Maybe I'm just not hearing from the other Maybe I'm just not hearing from the other side and I suspect maybe Mike and Karen are hearing from them, but I'm hearing a lot of pushback and a lot of concern. Um, and I've actually also reached out to and had some. Made some contact with some leaders in other cities and in other agencies. Would be meeting with and speaking with over the course of the coming months about what if anything could be done in the. Protection side of that, not in the solving the problem side of it for the homeless, but on the. How to protect the health, safety and welfare of the community side of it. Um. Those are pretty much it. I can't read my chicken scratch here. So I'll leave it at that and I know we're going to have a long discussion on the budget, so. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. I'm going to just take a couple of minutes like everybody else. I went to. I went to the school opening, uh, which was fantastic. Looking forward to they're taking down a building. Starting in three weeks, I think. So they can start the next phase. That's great. I've talked to many homeowners in the La Costa area as well. Uh. With people. With great ideas. One of the ideas that I haven't heard before. That I'm going to throw at John Cotty right now is, uh, in normal real estate. What you do is you write a notice of a defective and dangerous condition. To the landowner. And put them on notice that they are responsible for any claims that result from it. And, uh, most commercial landlords are very interested in responding to something like that because they can't. And once they receive that, they can no longer claim. That they, that everything is hunky-dory and safe and they had no idea there was a dangerous and defective condition. So that's, that's an avenue that I would like us to. Take if that's at all appropriate. And, uh. I, I also have enjoyed the. Meetings with the lobbying firm. And I think they're very crucial to our, uh. The health of our city, the long-term health of our city. And so having said that, I'm going to go on to. Item three A. Which is previously discussed items on the consent calendar. I don't think there are any. And now we're on three B. So have any items been pulled from the consent calendar?
I have three items that have been pulled by the public. They are three B five, three B eight and three B ten.
Five, eight and ten, you said?
Correct.
Okay. So, uh. Do I have a motion for dealing with the other, with the other items in the consent calendar?
I move to approve the, oh, wait, do we have? Some other comments?
Yeah, I would like to pull three before.
He wants to pull three before. And Bruce? I saw your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to pull three D seven, please.
Okay. Right?
Okay, I will move to approve the consent calendar, accepting items. Three B four, three B five, three B seven, three B eight and three B ten.
I have a second. Second, did you just second that?
I tried.
Okay, Mikey just seconded that. Any, uh, any comments? So we call the roll.
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein.
Yes.
Mayor Gresanti.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I believe the next item will be three B four. Which was pulled by Steve. Is yours a question or?
Very, very quick question. When I read the, the exhibit A from California Strategies. I, the last item on the page said they provide monthly, uh, monthly written briefing reports to the city council and city manager. On key issues. I've never seen one of those reports. I'm just asking Steve. If they can, could he just make sure we get those? I'd like to see what. Those reports consist of, if that's possible. That's all I got.
I believe those briefings are verbal.
Says written. Says provide monthly written briefings. I'm just reading what they say.
Okay.
I can pipe in that we do, there is a written report that they provide monthly. Um, I just don't know that they've ever been provided. To council in the past, so I'm pretty sure, uh, there is a written report.
Okay. Well, we have a, we have a meeting with them. Bruce and I have a meeting with them tomorrow. And I think we will ask them if there's any reason they shouldn't be circulated to the council members.
They say they are big, they report for the city council and city manager, so I assume. If they're writing what they think, we should be able to get them. But you are check, see what you can do.
Okay, thank you. There any other questions about three, about three before?
I'll move three before.
I'll second it. May, will you call the roll for us, Kelsey, please?
Yes, councilmember Yurin.
Yes.
Mayor Gresanti.
Yes.
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're on to three B five and either a member of the public pulled in. Who is the member of the public and are they going to speak to us?
This was pulled by Hamish Patterson and we do have him in the meeting if you're ready for public comments.
I think we're ready for public comments. Hi, Hamish. Are you available, Hamish?
You should see a pop-up asking you to unmute.
Counsel?
Hello, Hamish. We can hear you.
Just hello?
We hear you, Hamish.
Oh, sorry, sorry, technology. Uh, good, good evening, city council. Um, I just wanted to publicly welcome our interim city manager, Steve McClary. I had a wonderful conversation with them. Last Wednesday, filled them in with the history of the skate park and what's going on. And overlooking this, uh, this agenda item, I saw that it went through the administration and finance subcommittee and was reviewed and recommended. So that would be roughly fifty thousand dollars removed, leaving three hundred and seven thousand dollars in, uh. Our little kitty there for the skate park. And, um, I really wanted to make sure that, uh, publicly that. That we do get, I like RRM and, um, I was looking over their, uh. Their scope of services and I wanted to make sure that in Substack. B point two and Substack C point two, that we include the neighboring case property in the landscape. I know that. Scott Gillen and Robert Gold have been super concerned and super proactive about the landscaping issues and what would be planted along their, uh. Their wall and in their area. So I would highly suggest that, uh. The Parks and Rec. Put that in as part of the meeting because I see that there's a meeting and they weren't included. And I think that would be a good neighborly. Action to do. And with that, that's really all I have to say, except that, uh. I just want to remind everyone that this is, you got a lot going on down there at City Hall and. This is one thing that has huge community support and I just want to let you know that us as the community are ready to rock and roll and get the money and get this going. Once it gets through the, uh, the process here down at City Hall and, um. Let you know, we're not, we're not asleep at the wheel. We're here and we're present and, uh. We're fired up on this project, so I won't take any more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion, Hamish. I think it's a good idea. Do we have a motion to move forward with three B five?
I'll move three B five.
I'll second three B five.
Well. Bruce has a comment.
Bruce, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, yeah, so. I, I want to see this, this park, skate park. Built sooner than later, but it's my understanding and maybe somebody correct me if I'm wrong. It's not getting built in the coming fiscal year. Um, if that's correct. As I understand the report here, the agenda report. This was originally, this work that we're going to mail pay fifty thousand dollars for out of the fund to build the skate park. Was originally going to be performed by the staff. But the staff currently has too many things on its plate. Um, so we're, we're, it's being proposed that we take fifty thousand dollars out of the fund. Um, that we wouldn't otherwise have had to spend. The staff could do the work and spend it on a third-party consultant doing that work. If it's correct, this isn't going to get done for next year anyway. I'd rather see. What the staff's level of busyness is a year from now. And maybe they can do this work as they were going to do and we can save the. Um, fifty thousand dollars from the budget for the skate park and put that into building a better skate park. Along with the other money that we're going to need. So that's my comment.
Jesse, are you available to make a comment, please?
Yes, I am. Good evening, council, Mayor Gresanti and council. Uh, let me clarify that this, this work. Um, is part of the process for us moving towards the, the build of the skate park. So we can't actually start the construction portion of the skate park. Until we have the completed design plans. And so we actually need this to keep the process moving forward. Uh, this work that's here is, will essentially create the design documents. For the entire site. And if, if you're familiar with the temporary skate park project. Uh, we did utilize public works for that and, and our intention and when this agreement, our original agreement for the design of the, the permanent skate park in. February of last year, so two thousand twenty. Our plan was to do that same process we did at the temporary skate park, which is where. Our selected contractor handled the construction documents and, and design work related directly to. The actual. Park itself. But then we utilized public works for our temporary skate park to do all of the plans that you saw at Planning Commission and, and a lot of the engineering work for. Uh. You know, parking and traffic and safe layout, all of that. And so. Obviously, things have changed pretty significantly since that time. And so this work, it, it, it's not, it's not something, if we delay this work, it will delay the skate park itself. This is actually a function of us trying to get it through and moving as quick as possible because those documents are. Pretty intensive and, and one thing I want to touch on with what Hamish said is the reason you don't see. The landscape plans as a major part of this is that. We've actually already determined what plants, what landscape is going to be installed there, including the trees that. Uh, you mentioned that will, will go along the wall on the north. And the east side of the property. So that's actually where we think we're going to get some cost savings back in this agreement is that we have a lot of work, preliminary work that's been done that. We think we'll be able to hand over to them. And they'll be able to run with it instead of having to go and, and. Figure out what landscape we're going to put in. We've already vetted that through the Parks and Recreation Commission. To get their thoughts on the native plants and then obviously the trees that, that Hamish mentioned. So. This work, like I said, it, it is the precursor to us taking it to the planning commission to get final approval before it comes to council. So. Uh, it's not something where if you delay it, we can just see where we are in a year. If you delay it, it will delay the, the project moving forward.
So let me ask you two questions then. First question is, um, how long is this going to take? This, this piece of the project?
Uh, this piece of the work, we expect to take six to eight weeks to complete once we have the approval tonight.
Okay, so, um, are, are we sometime in the next twelve months then going to be actually beginning? Break ground and begin construction of this permanent skate park?
Is that the? That's the plan and the, the one caveat to that is making sure that we have enough fundraising completed to start the project and move it forward. So. Our plan is to have this to the planning commission sometime this summer and then to bring it to city council for final approval. Before we release the RFP for construction. Uh. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of anxiousness and, and a lot of support for helping with fundraising. So. Uh, we're confident that it's going to go smoothly and that we'll be able to get this thing moving pretty quick.
So when, when is the expectation that this will break ground and when's the expectation it will be completed?
We anticipated it would take about a year to build from start to finish in our original, our original. Timeframe was to have it completed by next summer, summer two thousand twenty-two. We're running a touch behind because we've had to try and catch up on all these documents. And getting them prepped for planning commission, but also. Uh, we actually went back and forth with a couple of commissions and I don't mean this in a negative way. We just wanted to make sure that we really dialed everything in and had it correct. With a temporary skate park, we were under a quick deadline to get it done as fast as possible. So we, our, our. Public process, our public outreach process dealing, you know, interacting with our commissions and getting their approval was. On warp speed timeframe. This is a little different because there have been a couple of questions that we wanted to bring back and really made sure that we get right. Because once this is in, it's not like a temporary skate park where it can be shifted around. This is in the ground for what we hope is decades. So we, we've been very deliberate and thorough with our process here. And so that's the reason for the couple of month delay right now. Uh, but if everything goes smoothly. Uh, our project timeframe is delayed by a couple of months at this point. So hopefully by late summer or early fall next year. If everything moves, moves smoothly.
So, so assuming unless planning commission turns it down or we turn it down, send it back to the drawing board, we're looking at maybe starting this by October and November, breaking ground and beginning?
Um, I do want to say that I. I, I want to be clear that since we don't have the funds raised for the skate park yet, we do have some verbal commitments or some, some discussions that have happened. But until we have those dollars. Um, I don't want to say I'm, I'm certain it's going to move forward. I want to make sure we have that money before we start moving the project forward. So. Uh, if everything goes to plan, yes, we would hope to break ground. Hopefully later this year, early next year, I guess it just, it depends on how quickly we can get the RFP out, but also what kind of response we get back. But that's our plan.
Okay, thanks. That's, that's all great news. I wasn't aware it was moving forward at that, to that speed.
I saw your hand.
I just want to add into what Jesse's talking about, um, and say that. Doing the work that is authorized, would be authorized under this agreement will help. Uh, us to apply for grant funding as well. So if we have this completed, we have a much better package that moves forward to find the funding in addition to the fundraising that's going to happen. Um, so this is really a piece towards, uh, securing funding to move the whole project forward.
Thank you, Lisa. So I'd like to. See a motion to go ahead with, with this transfer.
I'll make a motion. Gresanti, do you have a motion on the floor from councilmember Yurin to approve the recommended action? And you seconded it?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Are you ready for a roll call on that motion?
I am ready for a roll call and thank you for the prompting. I really need it.
Councilmember Yurin.
Yes.
Mayor Gresanti.
Yes.
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, that takes us to three B seven. And I don't know who, who pulled that. Was that you, Bruce?
I think that was me if it was, if it wasn't anyone else. Uh, just a quick question here. Um, I see we got six proposals. Three of them are. Roughly in the same ballpark than the other three are substantially higher. Uh, this is not always the best. I remember being told years ago, you know, get a number of bids, don't take the highest, don't take the lowest. The best ones usually somewhere in the middle. Um, I know that GMZ, which is the second lowest and not materially higher than the lowest. Is doing the Civic Center Way Improvement Project. So we've got experience with them. I think J and H did the speed bumps. I don't know what else they've done. I just want to. Understand, um, what your level of satisfaction is with the work that they have done for the city so far. And how it compares to the work the second lowest bidder did before we found, before we approved this.
Uh, yes, uh, um. Well, fortunately, I, I've been working with J and H. Um, engineering. For probably. Hate to say it, close to thirty years, um, between working here at the city and, and working at my other agencies. They've been around. Doing this type of work. For, you know, for years. They're very capable. Um. Have done several projects with us and are, are, this is, this is in their wheelhouse. Um, we had two very good bids, two very good contractors, them and GMZ. Um, e- either one of them would have been really. Great and, and, um. Um, I'm excited to be working with J and H on this project and he'll. It, this will be a really good project.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
I just, just a quick comment. I just want to say that. I'm. Happily amazed at the bids are that low after what I witnessed. After the big rain, after the Woolsey fire, it was a. After the big rain, after the Woolsey fire, it was a disaster over there. It was mud. Coming up over and properties and roads and, I mean, I, I, I would. It was such a mess. So uh, it's a, it's a great bid for all that, for that work. Is that, that um, drainage system there was decades old and terrible repair. I think most of what I saw, so excellent job.
Okay. Kelsey, are you available to call the roll?
I am. I did notice Lisa had raised her hand. I don't know if she needed to jump in.
I'm sorry, Lisa.
I, I just wanted to make a point, um, just because again, we have a lot of new folks on council and I don't know that this has come up. And Rob did a great job and we were lucky enough to get two really great bids as our low bid. But when we go out to public bid, we are obliged to take the lowest responsible bidder. So unless there is some reason that we would throw them out. As a public agency, that is our requirement. So we can't meet in the middle. Um, although in private business you can. So I just wanted to make that point clear. And I mean, the, the good news is we had excellent bids um, this time around. So um, it was really an easy choice for Rob.
Okay, Lisa, I appreciate that. I was actually focused on the question of whether they were reasonable or responsible.
Yes.
So, and, and I, and I got the answer.
Good.
Thank you. Kelsey, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Council member Fair?
Yes.
Council member Pearson?
Yes.
Council member Yurin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Now we're on to item three B eight, which was pulled by a member of the public.
Yes, we have two speakers signed up for this item, Bill Sampson and John Maza. I'm checking to see, I don't see Bill Sampson immediately in the meeting, so we'll hear from John Maza while I look for Bill.
Okay. John, are you available?
Certainly am. Uh, the reason I pull this is this is a one-sided agreement uh, for. A for-profit company that's a very profitable uh, contract. That establishes a, a, either an oligopoly or a monopoly since we only allow two. And so we have to keep that in mind when we give it out. This is more than a race. It's also an expo, whatever that is. I know we're going to add a thousand new people and the new participants, and that's just the runners, not the people that come with them. In the next two years. And this is very detrimental to uh, the people in West Malibu. Since they've changed the entrance of the uh, race to Westford Beach Road coming onto Coast Highway. Which basically cuts Malibu West and, and uh, Malibu Park and everything north of that. Off from the highway. Um, so. It doesn't help the public to have this and it doesn't help Malibu because. We like to have tourists, I guess, but in this case, um. We're going to. We have no sheriff's protection required on this. So you know and I know that there's going to be a traffic jam. And you know and I know that there's going to be a couple sheriff's cars down there and we're going to pay for them. We're going to pay for them because they're going to come off patrol. So I would like to add under five point six. That they be required to hire two sheriffs, uh, traffic officers at their dime from the sheriff's department.
Two, uh, why should we? John, is that two cars or two officers?
Whatever we need for traffic control. They, they need to provide this. It's, it's required as. Uh, was said earlier in the meeting of all TUPs. Uh, the other thing is we're going to lose the revenue from the parking lot. We're getting no revenue from this at all and we're going to lose the revenue from the parking lot tax. So they should be required to reimburse us for our lost revenue. It's only fair. They're closing down the parking lot to put on an expo and a race. And we get, I think fifteen percent of that money, we're going to lose a whole weekend. And as you know and I know, uh, summers last all year round now. So not only are we going to get a traffic jam, but we're going to get uh, uh, loss of revenue. And we'll be using our sheriffs to patrol this thing. So I think it's only fair since they're making so much money. Five thousand people, and I think they charge fifty bucks a person, uh, is a lot of money and they can afford to hire those cars. Or motorcycles or whatever, and they can afford to reimburse us for the lost revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is Bill in the audience?
No, we can't find Bill Sampson in the meeting, so that concludes public comments.
Is the director of the race in the audience?
I could jump in real quick. Uh, Mayor Grisanti, council members of council, good evening again. I just want to touch base real quick on the agreement itself. I know, uh, it, just to make sure it was, it was clear from what was in the report. But uh, the item before you is for a new three-year agreement for the, the Malibu Half Marathon and five K through two thousand twenty-three. Our previous agreement ended last year and then following the success of that event over the past four years. Even though our agreement was, our current agreement was for the past three, uh, we actually did it another year prior to that on a trial run to see how they would do. Uh, it is one of the two road races that's permitted each year in the city of Malibu per the city council policy number forty-seven, which is related to road races. And the structure of this new agreement is similar to the previous agreement. It's a three-year agreement. It also requires that there's a minimum donation to the Boys and Girls Club, who is the primary benefactor of this event. And then it does limit the number of onsite participants that can be there. And so this race, just like any other large event or race, is required to go through the permitting process. So sheriffs are a part of that. And I know that, that Erica could certainly touch base on that. She's here as well. Uh, but I, I do want to just say a couple of items to note is, um, you know, discussing the benefit of this event for the city. Since the race resumed, this race resumed in two thousand seventeen, the, the Boys and Girls Club has received approximately a hundred and two thousand dollars. In donations from Erica and the Malibu Half Marathon and five K. And of that hundred and two thousand, only thirty-seven, a little over thirty-seven thousand of it was actually required to, to be donated. So even on their minimum donation years, they donated well above that, except for last year where they actually didn't have a physical race. And they still donated over five thousand dollars to, to the Boys and Girls Club of Malibu. So, um, I will say that, that we've worked with Erica for, for the four years of this agreement. And, and she's very good about working with us, being accommodating when we try to adjust things to make improvements to the race each year. And I know that, uh, she can touch a little bit, like I said, touch base a little bit more on some of that sheriff stuff, but I just want to be clear that. We do have sheriff, sheriff there. It's just like any other major event. So. Uh, Erica, I, I think you're in the meeting here. If we can unmute her.
Yes.
If you're on camera. Alex, that would be great.
Thank you so much. Good evening, uh, mayor, council members, staff and um, fellow residents. Uh, thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk a little bit about the event and Steve, thank you for your concerns. I'll take this um, opportunity to clarify that during our annual TUP. We are required to meet with the sheriff's department. We submit our approved traffic control plans. Um, approved by Caltrans and prepared by a professional traffic control company. And uh, based on the plan, the sheriff's department will make a recommendation where they want to station their officers. And of course, we pay for uh, the officer's time there. So it's not a direct cost to the city. We also pay, of course, for our uh, TUP permit in addition to uh, what we raise for Boys and Girls Club of Malibu. And uh, of course, every year there's a learning process. So we be brief with the sheriff's department. And based on that, we build on improving the plan for the following year. So thank you for that feedback. In terms of the parking um, revenue, I believe that that is actually managed by the county overlay, not the city of Malibu. But um, I might be wrong with that. We deal with them when we actually pay for that space ourselves. So anything that we take um, up in terms of space, we are directly charged by the county overlay. So it's not less revenue and we actually probably secure a much higher revenue given the low season when the event takes place, which is mid-November. Um, in terms of increased uh, capacity, the first thing I'd like to clarify is that we're actually asking to. Uh, reduce the impact by um, a better management of the crowd and splitting it over the weekend. The expo that was mentioned is really an invitation for the participants to come and pick up their bibs and race packets and shirts. So they were already required to come Saturday, which um, is an opportunity for them to get acquainted with the site. And, and hopefully also shop locally, um, which I know is something important to the Chamber of Commerce, which I, we are a member of. Um, and this way we are basically allowing a portion of these people only to come on Saturday. And then another only on Sunday. And, and finally, in terms of impact uh, for the neighbors, um, I completely understand that that's the main priority. And um, we're particularly sensitive about wanting to respect that. But if, I strongly believe that this is a great opportunity also for a, a community to have a positive event. That promotes a great, you know, lifestyle, active outdoor lifestyles and support a great cause that's so dear to us. And that benefits the community. Um, and hopefully, you know, creates a memorable experience for everyone. And, and really it's an opportunity to share our beautiful community with, with some um, out of towners. So thank you for your time. And I'm available to answer any other question, of course.
I see Bruce has his hand up, so perhaps he has a question for you and then Steve and I would, I have one for you as well.
And actually Mikey had his hand up before.
And Mikey, I'm sorry, Mikey.
You don't like my hand? I don't know. I'm going to have to do something about that. Um.
I got to show you the electronic one. It's just, you put it up, it stays up.
Okay, well, I had it up. It was up.
I'm sorry.
I just want to say, I think most of what I was going to say has been said. Um, I, Mr. Maza was mistaken on some of his points. There concerning law enforcement and who pays for it. Um, this is done in November and, but you've heard the rest. It does, this, first of all, there's a ton of locals in this event. There's no doubt about that. Now, there's people from out of town too. I have attended this event. I, I just got to say, and I told this to Erica before, it's the best run event I've personally. Love it sort of ever been to. It is incredibly well-run and it has. I'm sure there's some sort of impact. I think the Malibu West, I didn't feel it. I don't know what, you know, they do a really, really good job. It's much less of an impact than bigger events, so to speak. So, um. I think it's a great event. I love, I mean, they do a masterful job with the Boys and Girls Club. And the Boys and Girls Club is there helping. It's a, I don't know, fantastic event. I urge everyone to come down and just check it out. And, and hang out a little bit. It's, it's really actually incredibly well-done event. I thank you for that, Erica. And that's my comments.
Thank you, Mikey. I'm going to call Bruce next unless I miss somebody else.
Okay, thanks, Paul. So, um. I, I thought John's points were well-taken, uh, but I'm also glad to hear that the, from Erica and, and from Jesse. That we are in fact going to not have to bear the cost of traffic control. Um, I do question whether that, it, it seems to me it would be better to have that in the contract than to rely on the TUP process. But if, a- and, and that's something maybe to think about for future purposes with these kinds of arrangements. The, th- this is a for-profit event. I, I take that point. This is not a nonprofit organization. So, and, and I don't begrudge anybody that. That's great, that's great. Um, but I, I'm not sure what we then, the city gets. Other than perhaps some, some goodwill from having this occur. Um, I, I like the fact that there's a contribution. The Boys and Girls Club is, is obviously a, um, worthy candidate for contributions. We're in fact probably going to approve a substantial grant later tonight, although we probably need to be thinking about them in tandem. So I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that beforehand. But I noticed, and, and I think Erica or someone else said this. The was, there was a hundred and two thousand dollars contributed over three years, which was three times the amount that was committed. Um, so I'm wondering whether we can't get a larger commitment going forward. Since the um, actual profits were sufficient to um, sustain a much larger contribution in the past. I also question whether the contribution ought to go directly to the Boys and Girls Club. As opposed to, to a specified fund that the city then would divide up among whatever it believes to be the worthy candidates. Just as like we're doing with the general fund later tonight. Um, I'm not sure why we have a contract that again, provides substantial benefit to a for-profit company. Identifies a specific charitable entity within Malibu. Boo and commits to give them funding when we from time to time may have different views about where that funding should go. So that, that would be my preference. I, I wonder, I just ca- question, could we do this for one year rather than three years? And then reassess a year from now whether we want to make a longer-term commitment and see how the um, how, how profitable this actually is. On one other point, which I, I hadn't focused on till I heard it talked about. So I thought John made a great point about losing money from parking. And then Erica says, and, and I appreciate that, that the organization pays the county. Do we get a percentage of what's paid the county, just like we would get a percentage of the parking? Or is that like a, they, they have a gotcha on us there. They, they, they escape having to pay us our fair share on that one. Does anyone know the answer to that?
I can, I can speak to that. We, we do not get anything from the county. And this is something that uh, Eric and I laugh about. We, we do our surf camps down at uh, the Malibu Pier. And we pay a, a very hefty fee for us to run even our own programs down there on the beach. So uh, that is something that's very common. Um, another point I'll touch on is. We, we did do this for a one-year trial year in two thousand seventeen. That was the first year. Um, not to delve, excuse me, not to dive too much into the history of it, but this event had run for many years. And then essentially had just become not, they were unable to run it. And so they took three or four years off and then Erica was a part of that original team that had put it on, but she was not the, the director. And so she approached us and said, hey, I know we, we had, we originally had been doing this for, for many years and it just wasn't working out. I want to revive this and do it the right way. And, and so we did it for a one-year trial in two thousand seventeen. And then this previous year has been for eighteen, nineteen and twenty. And so uh, the reason we do try to do a little bit longer-term agreement. And for reference, the, the Malibu Triathlon, which is our other permitted race, they have a ten-year agreement that they're entering year eight of right now. So uh, i- it's hard to plan in a, in a big event like this to scale without, you know, having the commitment. That you're going to be able to run it for the upcoming years. It helps with sponsorship and, and things like that. And so this is, this is a, a different, it's a, just a different race than the triathlon is. And so I know there's lots of discussion about um, it being profitable. And I won't speak to, to Erica's numbers, but I, I do know that our agreement actually does have escalating minimum donation amounts. As we go through this agreement. And the first year is the same as it was for two thousand twenty, which required a fifteen thousand dollar minimum donation. And the reason for that is, is, and Erica can speak this, they're not sure what's going to happen as we come back to things this year. You know, they had to run a virtual event where they lost thousands of people that were supposed to attend last year because of COVID. So um, the reason that amount was left at fifteen this year, and it does escalate each year from here, and it has in the previous agreement as well. Is that we wanted to make sure that she's able to, to get it back on its feet and moving again. But again.
Let me ask two follow-up questions and, and to, to take you back on that last point. What about a percentage um, contribution as opposed to a specified? That way, if the event doesn't do as well, it's a lesser contribution. If the event does better than contemplated, it's a higher contribution. Uh, that way the um, the organization's not at risk. And um, the city, the city or its designated charity potentially does better if the organization does much better than they contemplated. That's, that's, that's one thing to think about. The other question I have is, you said the city doesn't get anything from the parking. Is that, uh, it was my understanding, maybe wrong, we do get paid a percentage of the parking revenue in general. Is that, is that inaccurate?
I believe that's inaccurate. The only fees that we get from this is the uh, our permit fees that they.
I see, I see Lisa raising her hand. I think she probably can answer to us whether or not we get paid any money off the Zuma Beach Parking.
But in general, not this event.
In general, not this event. The city does get parking tax off of all the county beach lots. That was the agreement that the city made. Um, and that's part of why the city pays for the beach team. Because we get the parking tax related to it, related to all their parking.
So this, this is kind of a loophole, right? So this, this is kind of a loophole, right? I mean, we we suggested.
So for example, when the county uses those beaches, those beach lots for filming, the city gets our film permit fees, but we don't get any of the revenue related to the location fee that the county charges.
Well, we should, because it's offsetting the parking tax that we're not receiving.
I believe we're getting permitting fees on this contract. Is that correct?
But our permitting fees are based on our recovering our costs for granting permits. We've, we've been through that discussion in the past. So if it, we're foregoing revenue from the loss of the parking lot, there ought to be either in this contract or in agreement with the county, some way to recoup the lost revenue. Not only here, but in all these other instances that we're, that we're hearing about.
If I may, the the trade-off is we're talking a weekend in November. And it usually, I think if we were to look in the past at the revenue for the weekend before and the weekend after this, the amount of of parking revenue that's given up in November is minimal. And the benefit of the donation to the Boys and Girls Club or whoever else Erica decides to add on to that is is probably much greater than that. But I have a question for Erica when we get around to me having a turn, but Steve, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Jesse, I've got a couple of quick questions, Jeffy. Jesse, the amount donated to the Boys and Girls Club, how is that computed?
Um, I'll let Erica touch on that. I know that when we originally set it up, we had these minimum donation amounts in the contract. And I don't
How do I get from the minimum to what they put in there? What?
Right. Well, I was gonna say, I
That is not explained anywhere in the contract.
Yeah, and and that's because the minimum donation amount is there, but what Erica does is, and she could certainly speak for herself, but uh the minimum amount that comes in, anything she has over that, that she has left over that she can put towards the donation, she will do. And I, I, she can talk about how she calculates that, but
There cannot be a formula that says, here's how we're gonna compute that. So, I mean, let's just assume Erica next year sells this event to somebody else. You'd want that amount included in the contract. So whoever took it over, we'd make sure we'd get what we're supposed to get. Don't, it's not
We, we would, but if it were, if it were assigned to somebody else, and this actually happened with the Malibu Triathlon, we would bring that to council because that agreement's essentially reassigned once it's not, not her agreement anymore. So
Can you be, okay, I would suggest in the contract, we put something in there that identifies how this contribution is computed. I think you gotta do that. So everybody knows what we're getting and how we're getting it. And back to John's comment, uh John said they, it's a fifty-dollar fee for every uh participant. I think that number's a little bit higher. I believe this event is raising funds well north of five hundred thousand bucks a year. This is a, a, a revenue generating event. Uh, and I think the last number I saw was someplace six or seven hundred thousand. So uh there is money out there to be had. And I do like Bruce's suggestion to say it should be a percentage of something uh that where that where everybody, look. If, they called it, the, one of the things that I have a problem with or concern about is we give away the name Malibu for nothing. Right? I mean, this is a Malibu event. If you look at their website, they're selling Malibu t-shirts and Malibu this and Malibu that. They're, you know, if they were holding this event down in, you know, I don't know, Ontario, uh, they wouldn't get to participate, participation they're getting in Malibu. So there's a value of our name. And I'm just not sure when I look at this contract that we're getting the value for letting them use our name. And we should. It's an asset of ours. We should take advantage of that whenever we can.
I think Erica wants to respond to you, Steve.
Okay, I give one more question, then they can respond to all at once. How's that? Make your life easy, okay? Jesse, explain to me, I understand why a three-year deal is good for these people. Why is it good for the city? Because they're gonna increase the number of runners every year. It seems to me that if I were taking care of the residents in the city, I'd like to make sure that as, as this thing changes, which is going to do over the next three years, we've got the ability to say, we want to fix this, we want you to do this, we want whatever, whatever it, we have to do to make sure we're taking care of the residents. And with a three-year contract, I'd lose that ability, I think. So I'd like, I would go back to a one-year deal that Bruce talked about. That's all I get. Whoever wants to respond, please do.
Let me, let me jump in real quick. Um, I will say this, uh and the the benefits have been mentioned a couple of times by Erica and and I think Mikey mentioned it too. Uh, there are a lot of locals that do do attend this race and like Mikey, I I've been there, you know, I live not close to Malibu and I come in to go to this race. And so I know that being there and seeing all the locals that are there and all the support that gets drawn from the Boys and Girls Club and and the local residents that live there is significant. And and I'm not harping on the triathlon at all, but a triathlon is a different thing than a five K, right? So when somebody comes, like any, almost anybody can run or walk a five K, which is, is great. The flip side of that, I'll say, is that the work we do with Erica in this case is extremely low maintenance and does not take a lot of, of at least staff's time. I can tell you that in our dealings with her. And and her ability or her willingness to work with us on everything, it is actually in the agreement as well that we can cancel the agreement with written notice. I can't remember if it's thirty or sixty days out. I have to look and see what's in the agreement, but we do have the ability to cancel the agreement if if something isn't working. And I can tell you from from our perspective and working with her, we work with a lot of different people. Erica is is about as easy to work with as they come and is always willing to take that, the suggestions and the, and the workarounds. And that's not the case with a lot of events and and private things that we work with. So I would argue there is a pretty significant benefit to locals that that attend the event and Erica, I'll, I'll let you touch bases on the other stuff, but
You haven't answered the question.
Steve, Steve?
Yeah, I I'm just trying to get an answer to my question.
You're done for right now because we still have Erica, then Casey, and then Bruce.
Yes, I'd like to thank you for your comments and offer the opportunity um to address them uh one by one. The first thing about the contribution uh to Boys and Girls Club, I completely understand that the city wants to clear the way that they benefit. Uh, I think by setting a minimum amount, the the city is ensuring that they're getting that contribution, whether or not I am, you know, able to secure it on my own account or not, that's gonna be my responsibility. But personally, when I took on this event and really decided to uh align with the community needs and then I met with Casey and really felt so strongly about the work of Boys and Girls Club, I never felt that I needed or wanted to stop to a minimum donation. And that's my personal commitment, which I think Casey can testify to. My dream to become one of the major fundraisers for Boys and Girls Club. And that personal alignment and passion is what always gets me to go the extra mile. So besides giving them an opportunity of revenue by selling the beer gar- and the beer garden or um trying to encourage donation and really promoting people championing for Boys and Girls Club, we also create a space and a special ticket, which is a charity ticket that benefits the club only. Um, and of course, that revenue goes to them. So it's really also about a personal commitment. Um, I wanna make a difference for the community. Um, I know we talk, there's always, every year that I'm in front of you and I have this opportunity uh for some of you, I'm a new person, so I have to uh introduce myself and really restate my commitment to you. It is a for-profit company, but uh you've requested our uh P and L uh council member um hurling and I happily share the last five years. It is true that we have a high revenue, but our costs to put up this event are just as high. Um, we make a very, very small uh profit for the event and the first year and last year, uh we were in a major loss. So we're also coming from a year in a pandemic, our industry was, you know, not to say the least shaken by the situation. And we're really just trying to be there for people's need to have an opportunity to be a community, meet again. We've been in a social isolation. We've been in fear of meeting and living in the outdoors. And hopefully by November, we'll be in a position where we can create something where people feel there's an opportunity to enjoy the outdoors. Um in terms of the city's ability to give input, every year I am still required to get a T U P. So even if the agreement goes through, uh this does not guarantee me to obtain a T U P from the city unless I meet every checkbox, including uh the sheriff's approval for the event, including public works and encroachment permit, um et cetera. And at that point, I've, I have received different kind of emphasis throughout the years that I'm so thankful for because we are learning as we go and we wanna improve. Um, in terms of growing the event, I know that it seems maybe from the outside that this is gonna turn into um such and, you know, a profitable operation, but this is more to streamline traffic management. And for me, from a cost perspective, it means paying sheriffs two days, paying parking, um paying for staff two days, et cetera. But it is to impact less the community by spreading people over the course of two days. And of course, I need also to increase slightly participation to be able to balance the increase of costs. And and I really hope, of course, you're all invited to please come and experience first and the event because I know that that will be the stronger testament to what we're trying to create for the community. And I can't respond, uh you know, as as well as maybe you can to what the city's benefit is, but I'd like to think that what we're creating is something that it is a legacy for the residents, the families living in Malibu, the businesses thriving in Malibu, and really just something to be proud of that we can share with people such a beautiful coastline and promote such an important message and support a great cause. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erica. I see, I'm calling on Casey who runs the Boys and Girls Clubs. And then I'm gonna go with Bruce and then Karen. And I would like to have a turn somewhere. So Casey, you're on.
Hi there. Thank you, Paul, and I hope you get a turn also. Um, Erica, thank you so much and and members of council. Um, I just wanna say, you know, when we have an event in our town like the Malibu Marathon, which I've been fortunate to help steward and foster from its early days. And I've been so happy to do so because Erica has approached this event with community first, kids first. We should be thanking Erica and the Malibu Marathon for choosing our community. And I just wanna say publicly, Erica, thank you because you have put your race community first one hundred percent of the way. And that is so rare to see someone coming into the community and saying, I wanna make sure that this community is taken care of. So I wanna acknowledge that publicly. And the reason that I've stayed with you for all of these years is because of that. It's authentic, it's, it's real. You believe in the community, you believe in our children, you believe in our, our volunteers participating, how it can benefit our community. So thank you. And I also wanna say, when an event comes into our town and they put our community first, our community benefits. So when we talk about how is Malibu benefiting from the Malibu Marathon, a hundred thousand dollars plus over the course of five years? If you would like to translate that into services delivered, I'm happy to do so. Currently during COVID, five thousand individuals who either live in Malibu or receive services through us because they work in our community, receiving food pantry items because of donations like Erica's. Children who don't have access to tech, technology, who are able to stay in our facilities through an entire pandemic, one hundred of them, and receive academic care because of donations like Erica's. So let's put this in scope and scale, guys. We're talking about a small race that is making a huge impact in a small community. Don't push the good people out. Keep them in. Erica's one of the good people. Embrace them. Say, please come shower your money on Malibu because Malibu needs to learn how to take care of itself. Erica, I love you. Keep bringing the goodwill. Keep showering your love on us. And you are amazing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Casey. Karen?
Thanks, Paul. I've also attended this event and been amazed at how well-organized it is, how smoothly it runs. That's a tribute to Erica. And that's also a tribute to Casey and her staff at the Boys and Girls Club because they provide a small army of volunteers who I, I can just tell you, my good friend Suhin Konstanza, who's been at the club for decades, uh told me uh two years ago, she got up at three in the morning to get there at whatever it was, four thirty, five o'clock, and worked that whole day. And she's just one person and I have a feeling she's representative of pretty much everybody there. But the, the race is possible in large part because of the volunteers from the Boys and Girls Club. It's a huge benefit to this community. Casey just touched on some of the things, and those are pandemic-related, but all year every year, the club provides after-school care, tutoring, mentoring, leadership training. It's not just a place where the kids play dodgeball. It performs a very valuable and important service to the community. And having the club here makes the entire community better. Kids have someplace to go after school. They're safe. They're with their friends. They're learning new skills. They're not out getting into trouble because their parents are working and they have no adult to, to be in their life after school. So I, I too wanna say thank you to Erica. I wanna say thank you to Casey and everybody at the club, and I would like to see this continue as long as possible.
Thank you, Karen. Bruce? If you make a motion, you cannot hear my comments. Think about it.
I actually, I actually wanna hear your comments, Paul. And that's what, something I was gonna say is, I, I, you know, I, I don't know about others, but I appreciate this conversation and conversations like this because I learned things from it that I wouldn't have known by just having something on a consent calendar and having it passed by consent at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, and I think the community learns things too. And there've been a lot of good points made tonight by just about everybody who's spoken. So I, I, I very much appreciate that. I learned things and they actually moved me towards approving, wanting, voting, going to vote to approve something that I was on the fence about. Even though it's small, um, I do wanna say two things, three things, actually. First of all, I'm, I'm having listened to the conversation and having looked at the contract more carefully, I agree, the three years versus one year is irrelevant because there is a thirty-day termination provision. So it's in essence, it's really a year-by-year contract because anybody can re, ask to reassess it. The donate, the contribution or donation, actually, it says Boys and Girls Club or another organization designated by the city. So that actually satisfies my concern about the um organization selecting the charity rather than the city selecting the charity. That's fine for us to do. I, I think that's really for us to do, not the organization. Um, Casey's um impassioned statements, I mean, I, I get that. Karen too, you know, but just wanna make sure it clear, this is not about the Boys and Girls Club. This, this is about this marathon. You know, it's easy to conflate them when you have a contribution as part of a contract. And it, it makes it hard to look at the issue objectively, but looking at it objectively, I like this. The one last thing I wanna say is, I'm, I, I hope we can get some consensus to ask that the staff take a look at our deal with the county and find out whether we ought, whether we can be getting a portion of the non-parking revenue that they're generating from the lot that we really should be getting in fairness because it's not all that different than a percentage of the parking revenue. So this has actually helped identify what may be a loophole in that agreement. And we ought to take a look at that and see if we can't close that loophole and that get us some additional revenue, not only here, but in other places as well. And Paul, I, I'm interested to hear your comments.
Okay, for starters, as far as our contract with the, with the County of Los Angeles, then you know, that has a term. I don't have any idea what that term is. I'd love to look at it and see what that's all about. I just wanna clarify a couple of things with Erica. Erica, from my reading of the uh application, the half marathon will be running up P C H and there will be a lane, a single lane of, of P C H closed in an eastbound direction until approximately noon on that Sunday. And that there will be no impairment of traffic for Saturday at all. Is that correct?
So Sunday's assessment is completely correct. It's a partial closure of the P C H. On Sunday, uh on Saturday, if we are organizing the five K, there'll be a two-hour more tops time span where one of the lanes that corresponds to the length of the Zuma Beach Parking one of the lanes that corresponds to the land of the Zuma Beach parking lot will be uh, closed to traffic to allow people to round around the parking lot. Um, but it will be over by ten AM uh, that morning. It will be reopened to traffic. And again, that doesn't close any intersection to any of the neighborhoods. Um, and it, I would expect a really minimum impact on uh, traffic uh, that day.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this. Is there a second?
Second, yes, I'll second.
May I call a question?
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Urie?
I'll abstain.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're on to three B ten. Which is the uh, work assignments for the Harry Borowski Memorial Youth Commission and the Arts Commission and Parks and Recreational Commission. Someone pulled this?
Yes.
Pardon me?
It it was pulled first by the public. We have John Maza and Ryan signed up to speak if you're ready to hear them.
I'm ready to hear them.
Okay, we'll hear from John Maza first.
Okay, this is a very, very simple comment. Um, it has to do with the Parks and Recreation Commission. The way item nine reads is that the Parks and Rec Commission can only discuss priorities for facilities and current parks. Okay, and I would like to add the word and potential future because we have tens of millions of dollars of land sitting there. Uh, and I think it is total folly to tell the Parks and Rec Commission that you can't even think about that. When you place improvements in parks. It may be that a soccer field was better positioned at Heather Cliff or a a a tennis court is better positioned somewhere else. And to plan our our parks around not using any of our vacant land and hogtying the Parks and Recs Commission from considering that doesn't make sense. So I'm just asking you to add three words, and that's and potential future parks. Okay, so then you pass what gets put wherever anything is, but at least your commission should be able to consider what's going on in the city as a whole and and the inventory of city assets. And so I don't see anything that would be detrimental with allowing them to discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I think that was a good suggestion. Is Ryan available?
We do have him in the meeting, so we'll get him unmuted in a second.
Good evening, council. I'd like to um, have you consider the uh, expansion of the concept for the Public Safety Commission assignments. And that is to explore the um, cost effectiveness, which is generally not a commission assignment. It's usually a council prerogative of costs, but we're talking about money tonight in the budget, and I'll speak to this as a later item. But it relates to the parking tax that you were just speaking to and a special deal that might somehow exempt the county from the voter imposed parking tax of ten percent on parking lot revenue in this city. And so that really needs to be flushed out. Um, I would hope that the mayor can obtain that deal contract or if it's an MOU, if it's even valid under the voter imposed tax uh, to have a deal that would possibly be a lesser amount than the ten percent. But what I wanted to say is that the beach team has been somehow financially burdened upon the city of Malibu for the state and county beach patrol and that the uh, county is collecting ninety percent of the parking revenue from Zuma Beach Lot in particular, but of many other lots as well. And so there's the Nicholas Canyon, there's Point Doom, there's Surf Rider. Um, and then there's some private entities that have parking lots, restaurants on the beach. Uh, one notable one in Paradise Cove is questionable whether you know, the twenty-five dollar a vehicle parking tax uh, percentage and all that totaled what the city got uh, for those full years with no COVID. The municipal code, uh, well, I'll get into this under the budget item, but the Public Safety Commission should consider alternative um, configuration of the beach team and possibly a different provider. And I know this might, you know, uh, anger the people who work for the county, but I did not get an answer from the staff to my question uh, several weeks ago is what is the per deputy hourly rate that we're being charged for the beach team program? And is this entirely at overtime pricing as if it was like a highly profitable movie shoot or some other event? So is the county double pricing it and then making us pay for it out of the so-called revenues that the voters impose on the parking lot? That would be a neat shell game, you know? Uh, it shouldn't work that way. The county should be paying for most of, if not half of the beach team. And the beach team could, I don't know, be privatized. It could be contracted by the not Santa Monica Police Department. Um, there's other sources, uh, maybe State Rangers would bid on it or, you know, I don't know. But let's look at the constitution and configuration of the beach team and alternatives.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Okay. Any members? Is there anyone who's on the council who wanted to speak on this? I can't see any hands.
Paul?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Everyone, okay?
Yeah, Steve, if you're there, I can't see you. You're not showing on my screen, unfortunately. Go for it.
Raise his hand and Karen and I also.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I got just a cou- a couple, two quick questions.
Sure.
Under the Harry Boras, Mikey, uh, a while back, you called me about a project to plant milkweed to promote monarch butterflies. And I thought it was a heck of a good idea. And we talked about trying to make that a community project. I would like to have under the the Harry Borowski Memorial Youth Commission, I would like to put in a milkweed project and have them work with Parks and Rec to see how we can do that on some of the uh, city-owned land. Uh, I just think that it's monarch butterflies, when they hatch and they're flying around, it's magical. And the more of those we can get, I think, make everybody happy. So I'd like to propose we do that. And then I've got a question over on the Public Safety Commission. Item number eight. Uh, make recommendations regarding the implementation of emergency warning sirens. I believe, and I could be wrong, but the warning sirens came in front of the Public Safety Commission about a year and a half ago. And I believe they voted or they concluded and that as a result of the information they got from the consultants, that the sirens wouldn't work during Santa Ana Wind Days. And I believe when it came in front of the city council, the consultant said the same thing. So I'm just wondering, what do you want these guys, what do you want the Public Safety Commission to do on these sirens? Just so we're clear what they're supposed to be doing. I don't know who wrote this, but somebody.
I see Lisa's got her hand in here.
Well, Susan, Susan can chime in, but I did want to note that uh, the city did receive a hazard mitigation grant for the sirens from FEMA. So we have money to um, do further planning and to explore the sirens further. And Susan can talk about that a little bit. I know she, Public Works and Susan and Public Safety have been working on that hazard mitigation grant.
Yeah, and just to to remind you also that when it came to the city council, they did recommend that we continue to pursue sirens as a possibility. And so that's why we applied for the grant and we received it. And so at this point, um, for the commission in terms of their assignment, there's still a lot of decisions to be made, and that's why this was included in there because there's still going to be decisions to be made on the uh, quantity, the type of sirens because you can have the sirens that are sound only or sirens that also have voice capability. And so we wanted to leave it on there so that as we're refining the potential siren system, that we can take it to the commission for their input.
Even though the commission didn't think they would work?
No, what they wanted was for us to continue to explore options for indoor warning systems. So we have done that. We actually uh, contracted a small contractor, the same vendor, to do a report, which I should be in receipt of like any day now on indoor warning systems using radio. Um, so all of these are tools in the toolbox. None of them are perfect. Um, and again, everything is still just moving forward. Um, sirens definitely have a place. It's not the answer to the whole equation. And also, we're looking at indoor warning systems.
Will the, will the main, the grant that we get allow us to also put money into the indoor warning systems?
No, it's for engineering and design and doing the environmental studies that would be required.
For indoor warning systems?
Or outdoor for sirens.
For sirens.
Yeah, outdoor warnings. Sirens are outdoor warning systems.
Right. I'm just saying, somebody should go back and take a look at both the city council meeting and the Public Safety Commission meeting. I think in both of those instances, the consultant said it wasn't going to work. That's my memory. I could be wrong. I'll go back.
What the the consultant said was that the ability of people inside their homes to hear a siren is limited because it depends on your proximity to the sirens and whether or not you are possibly hearing compared, if you're wearing earplugs at night while you sleep, you know, if you have triple pane windows. There's a lot of factors, the wind. So it did show that with the wind and with windows that are double pane, triple pane, that the ability for people to hear it is diminished. That was the result of the sound study.
Okay. I'm gonna go back, I'll watch, I'll watch him again. I have one last comment, and that's on Public Works Commission. Uh, I'd like to put in an item in there that they they explore dark sky opportunities. Uh, I think, I mean, I've I've been working with Rob Debo. We have, we're going to purchase one of the streetlights on Civic Center Way where the the road was changed. And he's been working with Jim Benya to put some dark sky lights in those things. There may be additional opportunities to pop up over time to do that, and I'd just like to have that on their radar screen to get as many dark sky components as we can in the city. That's all I got.
Thank you, Steve. Karen and Bruce.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Um, I think Lieutenant Braden is still in the meeting. I thought I saw him. Is that right? Yes, I believe he is. Um, Lieutenant.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you. I was just wondering if you could comment on Ryan's uh, suggestion that perhaps for the beach team, uh, the city might consider Santa Monica PD or I think he said State Park Rangers. Um, I just wonder uh, what that transition might look like to a different agency if you could comment.
Well, absolutely. I have, uh, I'll give, uh, let's see here, twenty plus years on the beach in all, all the different ranks. So what you're buying with the LA County Sheriff's Department, the deployment like for this coming weekend, the deployment is in excess of thirty to thirty-five people a day. But also with that deployment, I have to do emergency operations plan, which allows that if something was to go wrong on the beach, that I'm allowed to get response teams from all over the county. I have air units, I have special weapons teams, I have all these different things that come with the Sheriff's Department. So when Ryan makes a comment like, uh, oh, do we pay overtime for this? Well, you absolutely do. You're not buying a full-time employee, nor with the overtime, are you buying all their benefits and everything else that go in the contract of a normal, like when you buy a normal deputy, you're paying for all the supervision layers, you're paying for all the benefits of a deputy. Yes, you're paying a time and a half rate, but you're not only buying that deputy out there, you're also buying response teams and everything else for potential problems on the beach. And I will comment on Santa Monica. That would not absolutely be an option. It's even during the riots. The sheriff is the one that came in and created order in Santa Monica. Santa Monica hires the Sheriff's Department on a regular basis when they have concerts or anything else. Once they put the the rail line into Santa Monica, they were so overwhelmed that they didn't have enough officers to provide security. So the Sheriff's Department works overtime for Santa Monica PD. In those concerts, they were hiring up to a hundred deputies on the Thursday nights for these concerts. State Rangers, I have no idea, but uh, being I only see a couple of them out in the summer, I would highly, highly, highly doubt that they would have the potential to take on a contract that large. Um, the uh, I do have expertise in this, and what you're getting with the Sheriff's Department is that with any potential problems that would arise in Malibu that they'd be handled effectively. And privatizing something like that, I've worked actually out on the beach. The problem with it is it requires arrest sometimes. Uh, these private entities aren't, they don't have arrest powers. Which means deputies have to be involved anyway, and it's just like when you do the marathon. You want to enter into contracts with someone, it has to be safe for the community, which they would still be a sheriff's aspect in that the sheriff's a controlling agency in the Malibu area. So that would be my comments on it, but I'm open to any questions on it also.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve this work plan with three addendums plus any that you might recommend when you speak, Paul. The first is to add John's language to the Parks work plan. The second is to add um, some, whatever the words were that Steve espoused about pub for the dark skies for Public Works. And the third is I would like to omit item two from Public Safety, which is the um, homelessness working group issue because we voted last week to create a homelessness working group task force that we're going to be appointing people to. And this was written before we had that vote, and that would then be duplicative. So I'd like to propose that that be omitted.
Uh, Lisa, I see your hand, but I'm I'm gonna go and let Steve, uh, if you want to second it, Steve, then we can discuss.
I would like to second it with a friendly amendment, Bruce. If and if if Mikey agrees, because he's the one, this a milkweed project to put those monarch butterflies and plant that stuff in some of the city lots. I'd like to get that included in the Harry Borowski program and submit that as a friendly amendment. But Mikey, you, this was your idea, so I'll take whatever you suggest.
Well, that's, that's a great idea, and we should catch up on a few other old sneaky ideas that are brewing. So we should catch up on that.
So that I would make a friendly amendment, Bruce, you include that, and I'll second whatever, what else, everything else you said.
Bruce, will you accept that?
I I'll accept it, but I, but I question whether that wouldn't be a better thing to have a more more detailed discussion down the line, but if if others want to vote for that, I'll second.
Okay, and Lisa, you you have your hand raised.
Yes, um, I just wanted to point out that the the work plans were developed um, based on the conversation we had at the April twenty-second budget meeting where we discussed tailoring the the work plans to the city council agenda, work plan. And that anything that wasn't on the city council work plan, we were going to sort of remove from the commissions talking about it because we weren't trying to have the commissions get ahead of the council. And the main thing that was taken off were comments about planning for the vacant land. Uh, the vacant land is not on the council work plan. It's one of the things that we've had to push off because of staff bandwidth. Um, the concern about adding it in to talk about prematurely before a larger study is undertaken is that we then have um, commissions asking staff to be sort of pursue a line of thought prior to the larger discussion about what is happening on all of the land. Um, so that's really why we were trying to kind of keep that out of the current year and and sort of move it further down in a future year when we actually have the bandwidth and the resources to maybe move forward on those projects. So I'm just giving the background of why we took that out.
I don't, I don't view anything we should just said to be inconsistent with the motion and the various proposed changes. It it touches on the um, John's comment. It, it touches on the John's comment about the, and future facilities. I didn't take John to be saying that this, that that language meant that the Parks and Recreation should be looking at future facilities so much as taking them into account when deciding what to do with current ones.
All right. Lisa, I want to ask you a question as long as you're, you're ready to go here. I have been told in the past that the county has contributed significantly to the beach team, especially on the holidays, in addition to the money coming from the city of Malibu. Do you have any idea if that's actually true, or the, the significance of that donation?
I don't have any information about that. I am not aware of the county contributing dollars to the beach team, apart from the fact that they do pay the parking tax that comes to the city.
Okay.
I, I could comment on that, Paul.
Please, Mike.
Last, for example, last summer, when I was mayor and Sheila Kuehl called me on a couple of occasions to discuss the overwhelm we were experiencing from everybody in the world coming to Malibu, as we all remember. As a matter of fact, a year ago this coming weekend, we were very worried about that. We'd been overrun. Karen and I were on the phone like ten hours all day long trying to find help. So Sheila offered help there and had people come out and pick up trash. I don't remember law enforcement specifically mentioned, but she definitely sent out resources to help us. And I know that that's happened at times from conversations with Riva, that other resources were provided. And I don't, I think it was just on an as needed basis, as the county has their own funds that they can use at their discretion at times. That's understood it anyhow.
I see Jim Braden's hand, and then I'm gonna give to Karen again. Jim?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. There is a fund that we have through Sheila Kuehl's office. Sheila Kuehl placed for the Arrow Unit to be in Malibu for the summer. There's also money in that fund that is used for joining beaches to Malibu that are county beaches, like it is of Topanga. In that fund, it's used very liberally, a test from Sheila Kuehl's office allows me to use the fund for different things that aid Malibu in aid the third district. The, during the pandemic, Sheila Kuehl's office was more than complimenting and spent several hundred thousand dollars in Malibu to aid with the beaches. And I do have funds this summer also that the county kicks in to aid with projects. And this is above and beyond whatever comes from parking lot. So the, I think that, that fund in itself is about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the Sheila Kuehl's office is more than welcoming when we have additional needs.
Thank you, Lieutenant Braden. I was about to call Karen, and I see John was waving at me looking like I was going too far afield, and he wanted to tell us that I should confine myself to the agendized item. Is that correct, John?
You read my mind. Thank you, sir.
Karen?
Okay, hopefully this is within our our, our boundaries, John and Paul. I just wanted to mention two of the amendments that were suggested. And I think I'll ask about what I think is the simpler or the shorter conversation first. Regarding the youth commission getting involved in planting milkweed. I'm all for bringing the monarch butterflies back. I think everybody is. But I'm not sure if the council would be setting a precedent by adding items to the calendar of events or work plan of the youth commission. And if so, you know, do we want to cross that line? My understanding is that the youth commission comes up with their calendar of events and their own schedule. That's part of their leadership training. If that milkweed planting can be done, if that's something the youth commission wants to add to their plan, then I think that's fantastic. If not, I think there are other ways to go about it. So I just don't know if we want to set that precedent. And I don't know, Lisa, do you have a comment? Okay, and then I'll ask my other question after this.
So there is a general item on the youth commission's work plan that they, let's see, they are to work to, it's item ten, to conduct a joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission to coordinate a program, project, or event. So they have that as a very general topic, and there is a similar one on the Parks and Rec Commission. I don't know that you necessarily need to designate it in the work plan that it's milkweed, but certainly the council could, by consensus, recommend that that's what they want the two commissions to focus on. But there is, there is already embedded in this the ability for those two commissions to work together and hold a joint meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is about another suggested amendment of eliminating the homeless working group. And I thought maybe Susan might want to comment on that, or perhaps Public Safety Commission Head Chris Frost. Because that, actually, that was discussed at the homeless working group meeting on whatever day we met, Tuesday. Because there were members of the homeless working group who recognized that if each council member is appointing two people, not everybody in the homeless working group is going to be on this new commission. And there was concern that they would no longer have a voice in the process. So it was explained to them on Tuesday, I think it was Susan, or Wednesday, that, that their input was still welcome within the homeless working group, so. And I, and I will say, I did also wonder about having redundant efforts that might either overlap or be in conflict. But to date, the homeless working group has been told that they would continue.
Yeah, and I would say that at this point, you know, when I looked at the work plan, I thought about it, but I feel like it's a premature to change it right now, because the discussion with the council on a possible task force committee, whatever it is, has not been, it's not a done deal yet, right? We're gonna be bringing it back to discuss exactly what that looks like. And it could be that the working group, perhaps we turn them into like kind of a resource group for if we have a task force, and then the working group can still exist. Possibly, or maybe they become subcommittees of the task force that are helping with the workload. But I guess my thought was that it, it seemed premature to say it's completely going away since we haven't had the full discussion yet with council on the creation of the task force and exactly what it looks like.
Okay. I'm gonna call the question. It's almost nine o'clock. Let's, let's, let's call the question. Kelsey, can you read us the question?
The motion, as I understand it, was to approve the recommended action with four changes. To add language to the Parks and Recreation work plan to consider potential future parks when making recommendations regarding the priority of facilities and amenities. Two, add exploration of dark skies compliant projects to the Public Works Commission work plan. Three was remove item two from the Public Safety Commission work plan. That was working with the homeless task, homeless working group. And four, add a milkweed planting project to the youth commission work plan.
I think that as I look around the room, that taking out item two from public safety does not have majority approval. I don't know if that.
How do you discern that from looking around the room? You may be right.
Well, if you, if you like, we can, we can call and vote on it.
Vote on each item separately.
You want to vote on each item separately?
Please.
Okay, Kelsey, we're gonna, we're gonna scratch, and we're gonna start off with a vote to approve the Memorial Youth Commission with the
Planting Project?
Well, that's under, that would be under item ten. So I don't know that we have to be specific about it. I'd like to put it forward as, as printed by staff.
To be clear, Mayor Grisanti, are you making a substitute motion to approve the recommended action without any amendments?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we'd call the vote for the, assuming there's a second, we'll call the vote for the substitute motion first, and if that motion should fail, then we would call the vote for Mayor Protem Silverstein's motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'm lost here a little bit.
Yeah.
I think it wasn't.
I think you gotta go with Bruce first.
Well, so, this is a substitute motion. If I don't get a vote on it, then yes, we go back and do Bruce's first.
So your substitute motion is just to scrap any changes, vote to approve this as presented?
I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that the substitute motion be that we go back and attack the Borowski one first. And as to that one, since there is an item number ten that talks about a joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission to coordinate a program, project, or event, that we assume that if they're gonna do a milkweed project, it would be under that item. I still don't see a second, so.
I, I will second, although I, I want to make a hundred percent sure. So Paul, are you saying the original consent item? And now we're adding this milkweed component?
What I'm saying is the milkweed component can fit in the Harry Borowski Memorial Youth Commission under item number ten, and we don't have to add it. They can pick whatever project they want. And we can encourage them in that direction. And I think that that's the kind of thing that they would be in desirous of doing. But if they, that isn't what they're desirous of doing, they can do something else with, with Parks and Rec.
I can second that.
So we're gonna add language to encourage it, but not required? Is that what I'm hearing?
I was hoping that each of us would call the people that we appointed to the Borowski thing and say, hey, it would be a really great idea if you guys put together a project to promote the planting of native milkweed, so we can bring the monarchs back to, to Malibu.
We all.
We don't appoint them. They apply.
Well, I, I, I encourage some people to apply. I'm sure that you guys appointed, I encourage some people to apply as well. But, yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
I think I've, I've created a huge mess.
I, I second that motion. Sorry, I'm just kidding.
No, that's okay. Bruce?
I, I want to make one comment on the elimination of item two, and I'm gonna try to help you with the motion that might get us to the goal line. On the elimination of item two, I was gonna say, I, I understand that the work, that the task force has not yet been finalized, but that's, we voted to do that, to, to actually go forward and do that. And unless we change our mind, we're going to be doing that. It seems wrong to me to put it superflusely on here, only to have to take it off in a couple weeks. We may as well just omit it. If it turns out that the task force never comes into fruition, we can always go back and add something to the public safety. So that's, so to streamline this, I think what I'm hearing from Paul, and it makes sense to me, is Steve and Mikey, if it's okay, let's, let's make the motion to approve the work plan, plus John Mazza's language, plus the Dark Sky Initiative, plus minus item two on public safety, and let's not add words for the butterfly initiative, because that's something that is implicitly in there already. That's the motion.
Moving forward, I'll, I'll second Bruce.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Karen?
I'm sorry, I have to ask your question. So Bruce, what are you saying about the homeless working group? Not the new commission?
I'm, I'm not saying anything about the homeless working group. I'm saying that we should not be putting on the public safety work plan that they should have a member that's assigned to a working group that's going to be supplanted by a work, the task force that we voted to create last week, last meeting. If somebody on this commission, or somebody on the council wants to appoint one of their commissioners to that work task force, that's perfectly fine. That's their prerogative. But we shouldn't be putting it on public safety's work plan, because that working group is not going to be the primary mover of the homelessness issue. The task force that we created or are going to be creating will be.
Yeah, that's what I assumed anyway. Okay.
That's logical. Okay. Kelsey, I think we're, we're ready for a vote.
Yes, just to confirm one more time, the motion, as I understand it at this point, is that we're approving the staff recommendation with two amendments. One is to add the language to the Parks and Recreation work plan suggested by John Mazza, so they can consider potential future parks. And the second would be to add exploration of dark skies compliant projects to the public works work plan. Mayor Protem Silverstein, is that your motion?
And the third was to eliminate item two from public safety.
Okay, one second. And that was seconded by Councilmember Euring, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then I am ready for the roll call if you are.
Roll.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, it's currently nine oh five. I'd like to take a eight-minute break. And then we come back and attack item four A.
Please turn off your video and your microphones. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looks like we have a quorum present. Okay. Calling the meeting back to order. Resuming with item four A. Proposed budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Okay.
You're up.
Great. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we are here now for the public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. I'm going to, it's not going to be quite as long as the presentation we gave you back, um, on April 22nd, but I am going to kind of go through everything again, because again, this is the public hearing. Before I start, I do wanna thank staff who worked very hard, um, to help us put this all together, all the department heads, the finance staff, Renee Neerman, Joni Hand, Brenda Cho, and Leah Tucker. Um, and I wanna thank, um, Alicia Tang for putting together these slides for me. Um, she doesn't typically get a lot of thanks, but she, she does this and makes numerous adjustments as we go through the process. So for many years, um, Malibu's been lucky enough to have robust revenues and reserves to enable the council to fund important community priorities. This proposed budget has limitations due in a large part to the economic impacts of the Woolsey Fire and the COVID-19 pandemic. Likewise, staff resources are currently stretched thin handling the continued rebuilding after the fire. Staff will be asking council to maintain the decision from the April 22nd budget workshop and refrain from adding items to the work plan for the upcoming year. Next slide, please. Staff has refined the proposed budget's revenue projections since the April 22nd budget workshop, based on current year actuals through April 30th, and the latest plans for the reopening of businesses based on the lifting of county and state COVID restrictions. Staff currently projects a 1.46 million dollar increase in general fund revenue from the prior version of the budget. This includes higher than originally predicted property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax from private rentals, among other, um, revenue sources. Next slide, please. General fund expenditures added to the budget at the direction of council at the April 22nd budget workshop include $50,000 for a technical consultant, added to the building and safety professional services, uh, line item for dark sky ordinance assistance, and 1.1 million dollars for two additional sheriff patrol cars. At the recommendation of the Administration and Finance Subcommittee and the Public Safety Commission, these patrols have been budgeted at five days per week each. Annual personnel costs of over $900,000 and the one-time $183,000 cost of the two patrol vehicles have been added to the budget in a separate line that can be found on the public safety page. Staff also included an additional $180,000 for extended summer beach team enforcement for moving the start date from Memorial Day weekend to the first of May. The Public Safety Commission also recommended the addition of one-half of a motorcycle deputy at a cost of approximately $172,000. This has not been added into the current proposed budget that you have before you, and council will need to determine if they want to add this additional service to the sheriff contract. Next slide, please. Best municipal finance practices dictate that the city should maintain a balanced general fund every year, which means that the ongoing operating expenses should not exceed the annual general fund revenue for the year. For fiscal year 21, 22, revenues are projected at $34.6 million and operational expenditures are projected at $39.9 million. In the current fiscal year, anticipating the slow recovery in revenue due to COVID-19 economic impacts, council established a designated reserve for the following fiscal year in the amount of $6.5 million. The proposed budget uses $5.3 million of this reserve to make up the general fund budget shortfall. The council will need to determine an ongoing solution if general fund expenses continue to exceed annual general fund revenue. Next slide, please. The city's budget is based on the expected revenue for the upcoming year. At this point in the budget process, revenues are tracking stronger than had, had been estimated in the first version of the budget. The projections in the proposed budget are now based on actual revenue received through April 30th. In fiscal year 2021, 2022, the city anticipates receiving approximately $81.5 million in revenue, including $34.6 million of general fund revenue, excluding FEMA reimbursements. Next slide, please. Several revenue sources have declined over the past year due to the economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. We are projecting that those decreases will continue in fiscal year 2020, 21, and 2022. We will continue to monitor the economic trends closely and update our projections accordingly. Where possible, staff has sought funding from FEMA for COVID-related costs. As of September 15th, 2020, FEMA limited the eligible city expenditures for COVID. The American Rescue Plan, signed in March, will retroactively cover some COVID-related costs from July 1st, 2020 on. Under the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, the city is slated to receive approximately $2.2 million. This number is not yet final and could be adjusted as the treasury accounts for all cities across the country. The funds will be dispersed in two allotments. The first payment of $1.1 million is scheduled to be received by June 11th of this year, but I do not as yet have confirmation of that. The remaining $1.1 million will not be received for at least 12 months and has not been included in the proposed budget for next year. These funds have been placed in a designated reserve, and the funds must be expended by December 31st, 2024. On May 10th, the Treasury released the interim final rule, or IFR, on the permissible uses of the ARPA funds. The rule will not become final until the 60-day comment period has elapsed. And it is not yet clear if there might be different guidelines for cities under 50,000, um, in population. So we're, we're getting a little bit of, um, conflicting data, and as we attend webinars and, um, sessions held by the Treasury and the League of California Cities, we're trying to discern these, um, the rules as they are coming down. One of the allowable uses in the IFR as it exists today is to fund the rehiring of staff positions eliminated due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Four positions recommended for inclusion in the proposed budget were eliminated in the current year budget due to those economic impacts. The part-time fire safety liaison, the recreation coordinator, the planning technician, and the administrative assistant. A full year of those costs is approximately $330,000. And as I mentioned before, these funds can be used over multiple years. So that is a possibility for use, and that's something that, as we get into the discussion, I would like the council to address in terms of, um, thoughts about how to best deploy these funds with the knowledge we have to date, knowing, you know, it's still in flux. Next slide, please. Property tax accounts for 43% of the general fund revenue. Malibu's other major tax revenue sources are sales tax, utility users' tax, and transient occupancy tax, which together make up another 28%. Sales tax and transient occupancy tax for hotels have seen declines related to COVID-19 restrictions. Licenses and permits and service charges are the next largest sources of revenue, each at 9%. Next slide, please. A review of the general fund revenue over the past 10 years demonstrates the city's financial growth and stability prior to the Woolsey Fire and the COVID-19 pandemic. The city began to see significant growth in fiscal year 2012 to 2013, with general fund revenue increasing from $21.6 million in fiscal year 2011, 2012 to $25 million in fiscal year 2013 to 2014, and then to $33.6 million in fiscal year 2018, 2019. In a normal year, we're conservative in budgeting and forecasting. Um, in a CO, you know, post-COVID year, we're a little more conservative. Um, but we are projecting revenue to continue to be impacted for this fiscal year and next. However, as I mentioned before, the revenues through April 30th are stronger than we had originally predicted, and projections for next fiscal year have been increased to reflect this. Next slide, please. Assessed property value information is provided to the city from the Los Angeles County Assessors Office and shows an assessed value of $18.5 billion. This represents a 4.6% increase over the previous year and a 59% increase over 10 years. The year prior to the Woolsey Fire, the city's assessed property value increased at 7.3%. The strength of the city's assessed values and subsequent property tax revenues have helped the city weather the economic impacts of both the Woolsey Fire and the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide, please. The growth in secured property tax follows the same trend line as the city's overall general fund revenue, as well as the growth of the city's assessed property tax value. Malibu receives 7.04 cents of every property tax dollar paid. 10 years ago, the city received $7.1 million in property taxes, and last year that number was $11.6 million. Based on the property tax receipts for the current year, we are projecting that this revenue source will be $12.2 million for the next fiscal year. And that's an increase, again, um, based on our April receipts. Uh, and so we've increased that from what we had originally projected in the first version of the budget. Next slide, please. The city's second-largest tax revenue source is sales tax, which again had experienced growth over the years prior to the Woolsey Fire and the COVID-19 pandemic. The city's major sales tax contributors are typically restaurants. And unlike other jurisdictions, the holiday quarter, um, in the December is typically is, is their, uh, largest revenue generating quarter. Um, that is not true for Malibu. Um, the summer months are much higher. Staff will continue to monitor the economic impacts of COVID-19 restrictions on sales tax. The strength of sales tax revenue in the first three quarters of fiscal year 2019, 2020 meant that the closures in March 2020 did not severely impact the city's revenue in that year. And, um, and you can see that our trend, while it wasn't excessively high, was still going up even as the pandemic, um, had begun. The dr, the decrease projected for the current fiscal year, which we had actually predicted as a far greater decrease, um, we're seeing those numbers being a little bit stronger than we had thought. Um, and as of, because of that, we are projecting that we are coming out of it, um, a little bit faster um, for the next fiscal year. And the proposed budget projects $3.2 million of revenue for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and that's $450,000 more than we had estimated in the first version of the budget. Um, staff works with our consultant, HDL, um, to continuously monitor these, uh, tax revenues on a quarterly basis, and we will see what happens as businesses reopen under the new, um, easing of restrictions. Next slide, please. The city's utility users' tax revenue is projected to be slightly lower with an annual revenue amount of $2 million. These taxes are levied on the charges paid by users of utilities, including electricity, gas, and telephone. The utility provider collects the taxes as part of their bills and remits the money to the city. With houses still in the. With houses still in the process of rebuilding after the Woolsey Fire and the closure of businesses due to COVID nineteen restrictions, these revenues have declined slightly. Next slide, please. Tax from hotels, motels, and the short-term rentals of private homes increased in the years prior to the Woolsey Fire. Tax from hotels and motels was two point three million dollars in fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. The Woolsey Fire and the COVID nineteen pandemic have also impacted this revenue source. We are projecting revenue of one point seven million dollars in the current year and one point nine million dollars for next year. And again, those are based on actuals received to date. Next slide, please. When the city first began collecting revenue from short-term rentals in two thousand and nine, it generated one hundred thousand dollars. Last year, revenues exceeded three million dollars. The new short-term rental enforcement ordinance took effect on January fifteenth of this year, requiring all short-term rentals to have a permit with the city. The city has issued one hundred and ninety seven permits to date, representing two hundred and thirty eight dwelling units. Additionally, the Malibu voters approved Measure T in November twenty twenty, raising the T O T from twelve percent to fifteen percent effective January first, twenty twenty one. Based on actuals through April thirtieth, these revenue projections have been increased. We are currently projecting revenue of four million dollars for the current year and two point five million dollars for next year. We are projecting next year's revenue conservatively in anticipation of the home-sharing short-term rental ordinance coming into effect probably midway between the year. Next fo- next slide, please. On February eighth, twenty twenty one, council extended the fee waivers for Woolsey Fire rebuilds of primary residences through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. To date, the city has waived over four point six million dollars in fees. Conservative projections for uncollected fees total nine point four million dollars over the current term of the program. I would mention here, and it's something that council can discuss, is that the A and F subcommittee recommended that council revisit the length of the fee waiver term and potentially look at setting that maybe earlier than the June thirtieth, twenty twenty two deadline. So that came out of the A and F budget meeting. Next slide, please. The proposed expenditure budget plan is based on the council's priorities and work plan. The work plan for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two is attached to the end of the budget and details the city's priorities and which departments will work collaboratively to achieve them. The city council set its top three priorities for fiscal years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty, twenty twenty one as public safety, Woolsey Fire recovery, and school district separation. These have been maintained in this version of the work plan. And at the budget workshop on April twenty second, the council opted not to add anything to the work plan at that time. On May thirteenth, the city council discussed creating a committee to address homelessness in Malibu. As I've mentioned before, staff resources are very thin. To manage the growing issues surrounding homelessness and staffing, what may potentially be an additional Brown Act body will require another full-time position. This was, this position was actually something we brought to you at the mid-year and put off moving forward with as further homelessness conversations happened. The salary and benefits for this public safety position would be approximately a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars annually. I will say that in some of the guidance and information that's come out about the American Rescue Plan funds, they are designated to serve disadvantaged and underserved populations, and they have mentioned homelessness in some of them. Staff can explore whether these ARPA funds could be potentially used to fund a public safety position to help us deal with these homelessness issues and lighten the burden of the existing staff. Next slide, please. Total expenditures are projected at ninety point nine million dollars. The general fund expenditure budget is forty four point four million dollars, and this includes thirty nine point nine million dollars in ongoing operating expenses funded by the thirty four point six million dollars in projected revenue and the five point three million dollars of the six point five million dollars designated reserves set aside by council in the current year. It also includes expenses related to the Woolsey Fire disaster capital improvement projects that will ultimately be reimbursed by FEMA and CAL O E S and some one-time capital projects that are being funded with general fund designated reserve dollars such as the skate park. The city's share of FEMA and CAL O E S capital projects related to the Woolsey Fire will be funded in the amount of one million dollars from the Southern California Edison Woolsey Fire Settlement Fund. Other major expenses include forty point seven million dollars of special revenue expenses. These are many of the city's capital projects. The Civic Center water treatment facility's operating budget is projected to be one point nine five million dollars in the next fiscal year, and all expenses for operating that facility will ultimately be reimbursed through assessments to the connected properties in phase one. Next slide, please. In fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, the city must make debt service payments on Legacy Park, City Hall, Tranqus Field, and the twenty eighteen vacant land acquisition. Debt service will total four point three million dollars. Next slide, please. Public safety remains one of the city's highest priorities. Law enforcement is a major part of that public safety mission. The city will spend over eight point eight million dollars on its contract with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department next year, which includes eight hundred and ninety three thousand dollars for the beach team. This represents an increase of one point four or five percent for the county's required administrative increase and the liability trust fund. The beach team amount is an increase of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars due to the extension of the season to include the entire month of May. This contract expense is twenty two percent of the city's annual operating budget and is the city's biggest single expense. At the recommendation of the A and F subcommittee and the Public Safety Commission, as I mentioned before, the proposed budget does include one point one million dollars for two additional five-day-per-week patrol cars. That will bring the entire contract total to nine point nine million dollars for the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year. In fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, this number would be increased by the annual increase, which this year was very low at the one point five pers- four or five percent. In prior years, we've seen that that increase usually around five to six percent. So just sort of putting that out there, in the future, we would expect, if you're, if you're looking at a five percent growth on this almost ten million dollar contract, that would be another half a million dollars to expect to pay in the future fiscal year. The current proposed budget does not include the addition of half a motorcycle deputy. As I mentioned before, that was a recommendation that came from the Public Safety Commission. As in addition to the contract, that cost would be approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And again, it should be noted that the new sheriff station at the Santa Monica College Satellite Campus is set to open in fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, and could add up to three million dollars to the city's annual sheriff contract. And those negotiations were sort of delayed by the COVID pandemic. That's probably something that will need to be addressed soon as we begin to plan for the future. Next slide, please. In the prior fiscal year, significant reductions in expenditures across all budgets were made in response to projected revenue decreases from the COVID nineteen pandemic. Staff salaries and benefits were moved from planning, building safety, environmental health, and public works to the Woolsey Fire budget, and were funded for one year by the S C E Woolsey Fire Settlement. Increases in most departments in fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two are a result of moving these staff expenses back to their home departments. Many increased expenses, such as the public safety sheriff contract expenses, are captured in the management and administration budget pages. These also include insurance costs, increased legal costs, and the first year of full debt service on the twenty eighteen land acquisition. Next slide, please. The city has continued to prioritize the Woolsey Fire Recovery. Staff and consultants have been dedicated to helping homeowners through the rebuilding process. To date, three hundred and six applications have been approved by planning, one hundred and eighty four building permits have been issued, and thirty one homes have been completed. While staff time has been shifted back to home departments for budget purposes, consultant services of two point one million dollars will continue to be captured in the Woolsey Fire budget. These expenditures will no longer be funded from the S C E Woolsey Fire Settlement Funds and will come from the general fund. Next slide, please. The proposed budget includes funding for eighty seven full-time employees and the equivalent of thirteen point two seven employees working as part-time staff. This is an increase of six full-time equivalent positions from the current year. These includes a grant administrator, an additional code enforcement officer, an administrative assistant in code enforcement, an associate civil engineer, a planning technician, and a recreation coordinator. The grants administrator and the associate civil engineer will be funded through grants and outside funding sources, not the general fund. A half-time fire safety liaison is included to provide more robust service and outreach to the community. As was previously mentioned, some of these positions replaced those that were eliminated in the current year due to COVID nineteen economic impacts. They are potentially eligible to be funded by the American Rescue Plan dollars for the next several years. The student intern program remains suspended for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two fiscal year. All salary ranges, positions, and benefits are approved by council as part of the final budget, and they will come to you as a part of that staff report. The city typically provides an annual cost of living adjustment to employees. The adjustment is derived from the Consumer Price Index for the County of Los Angeles using an annual percentage from February. The cost of living adjustment of three point four percent was not included in the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget. The proposed budget includes a two point two percent COLA, which is a blended rate between last year's three point four percent CPI and the current year's one percent CPI. The cost of the COLA will be approximately two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The city will also reinstate the match for employee contributions to their retirement plans. The program was also cut in the current year as a cost-saving measure. The ongoing cost of public employee pensions and retiree health benefits continues to be a topic for many municipalities. CalPERS contribution rates, which are now at eighteen point six percent for classic employees and seven point seven three percent for new employees, is actually a slight de- decrease from the current year. Market losses due to the COVID nineteen pandemic mean that CalPERS did not make their target investment rate of seven percent. This will affect future year contribution rates for the city. In fact, we've been told by CalPERS it takes two years for these losses to show up in our rates, and so we would expect to see them in another year. We continue to monitor these economic forecasts closely. And if CalPERS adjusts its discount rates and its investment portfolio, the city will be responsible for higher annual contributions in future years due to a larger unfunded liability. Next slide, please. The Public Employees Retirement Pension Reform Act, or P E P R A, was implemented to reduce retiree costs. Any public employee hired after twenty thirteen falls under the P E P R A rules. For the first time last ye- in the current year, the city has a greater number of new employees over classic employees, and that's what the goal was, so that as time moves on, the pension liabilities become lower. The cities worked hard to stay abreast of CalPERS pension trends and plan accordingly. This has been made easier for Malibu because we do not have any public safety employees or unions, which limit the city's liabilities. Additionally, the city's always had a very conservative PERS contribution plan. In addition to pension costs, the city will pay two hundred and sixty thousand dollars next year to cover health insurance for its existing retirees. By requiring five years of employment before health benefits are vested, the city has limited its future liability. And since two thousand nine, the city has been putting money aside to cover these retiree health costs in the future into a separate fund. As of twenty twenty one, the city, unlike most other municipalities, currently has enough reserves in this particular account for the O P E D liability to be fully funded. Next slide, please. The proposed budget includes thirty six point seven million dollars for capital projects. Ongoing multi-year projects include the street overlay project, improvements to Pacific Coast Highway, and Western Beach Road improvements. Construction on phase two of the Civic Center Water Treatment Facility will continue. The permanent skate park project is underway, but currently only has designated funding of, when I prepare this, three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars, but based on tonight's action, we're now at three hundred and seven thousand dollars. It's important to note that no general fund undesignated reserves will be used for capital improvements in fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. The city will use special revenue funds, grants, and designated reserves to complete these projects. Next slide, please. Budgets for the capital improvement projects related to the Woolsey Fire have been separated into their own budget pages to allow for better tracking. Projects in fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two include storm drain and embankment repairs to areas damaged in the severe storms following the fire. These costs are projected at four point five million dollars, much of which will be covered by FEMA, CAL O E S, and funds from the city's insurance pay- uh, carrier. The city's share is estimated to be one million dollars and will be funded by the S C E Woolsey Fire Settlement Fund. Next slide, please. Each year, the council awards funds to local nonprofit groups through the general fund grant program. This year's budget includes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for grants. Twenty-three applications were received totaling almost four hundred and forty thousand dollars. On May twelfth, the A and F subcommittee reviewed the grant applications and recommended awarding grants totaling one hundred and forty three thousand dollars to twenty organizations, and those can be found within the staff report. Next slide, please. At the start of the current fiscal year, the city had a general fund undesignated reserve of seventy nine percent of the annual general fund operating budget. The reserve remained strong even after the use of thirteen million dollars of reserves to complete the land acquisition in September of twenty eighteen and following the impacts of the Woolsey Fire. Strong revenues in the first three quarters of fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty contributed to maintaining the reserve going into the pandemic. The council set aside six point five million dollars in a designated reserve for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two operating expenditures. The proposed budget uses five point three million dollars of that reserve to cover the annual operating expenses. Designated reserves, as you can see in the lighter blue bar on its, on these graph, in the lighter blue section, grew significantly in fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty with receipt of the one-time Southern California Edison Woolsey Fire Settlement. Even with a decrease in revenues projected under the current economic conditions, the proposed budget provides for a general fund undesignated reserve of seventy two percent of the annual general fund operating budget. Council policy requires that the city maintain at least fifty percent in reserves, and to maintain the highest credit rating, the city must maintain at least sixty five percent in reserves. Next slide, please. The proposed budget anticipates a starting general fund undesignated reserve of twenty nine The proposed budget anticipates a starting general fund undesigned reserve of twenty nine million. And an end dollars and an ending reserve amount of twenty eight point five million dollars. All the facility and infrastructure repair project from the Woolsey Fire must be completed by the city and submitted. For reimbursement to FEMA and Cal O E S. Historically, these reimbursements have taken years to be received and I can personally tell you those agencies are swamped. Um, not only dealing with our disasters, but disasters all over. The state in terms of fire, but also the COVID nineteen pandemic has fallen on their shoulders to handle too. So they are, they are doing multiple duty um, all over the country. Um, in the proposed budget, we are showing these FEMA, Cal O E S costs as a liability against the general fund in the amount of three point eight million dollars. The S C E Woolsey Fire Settlement Fund is being used for the costs of the city's share of those projects. Based on the current year expenditures. Uh, we will start the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year with six point six million dollars and end with five point six million dollars. And you can see in the bottom line um, that while the undesigned reserve stays fairly strong. Um, we are drawing down undesigned general fund reserves um. And you can see that's not quite, but almost a ten million dollar draw on those reserves um. To fund again various capital projects, but also um, making use of that five point three million dollars. To help fund the operating expenses in the upcoming year. Um, next slide, please. So after tonight and once um, we incorporate all the council's recommendations. Uh, the final budget will come before you on June twenty eighth for adoption prior to. The July first start of the new fiscal year. Um, and that is the end of the formal presentation. I thank you for your patience. I'm here to answer questions. Um, the department heads are also here to answer questions. Should you have anything specific? And I move it forward.
All right, I see Steve's hand and then I'm gonna call Bruce after Steve.
And Mayor Crisanti, just so you know. Signed up. Did you want to hear them before council comments?
I believe the agenda says that I am gonna hear public comment next isn't, doesn't it? Yes. Let's, let's have the public comment. How many public commenters do we have?
It's three speakers, John Maza, Doug Stewart, and Ryan. We'll hear from John Maza first.
Okay. You there, John?
Yep, I'm here. Uh, first I want to point out. That depending on which number you use, in the last ten years, our budget has basically doubled. And some of the numbers, it's gone up a hundred and fifty percent. Our population has dropped. So you have a lot of room to play around when you consider cost per resident. Um, so I, I'm gonna concentrate on what I consider. What the residents need. There's a lot of other things out there, uh, but. Uh, you know, homeless, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just talking about the residents. And one thing. I think we need to feel secure is we need weekend and nighttime. Uh, compliance officers to handle uh, short-term rentals and dark skies. And it's not in the budget, but it's something the public needs. They actually need it, okay? Uh, now, one thing that I think has gone totally out of control. And we don't need is our beach patrol is about a million bucks now. We didn't have one for ten years. We didn't have any big riots last year. We didn't have any big problems. We gave a lot of tickets for cigarette butts. Uh, and we have extra patrol cars in your budget that can be called if there's a problem. So I think you need to tie. The budget for the beach patrol to the revenue generated from the parking lot. It's a county property. The beach patrol is patrolling county property and I know Jim Royal said, or uh. Said that, oh gee, they emptied the trashcans with county money. Well, that's their trashcans. Um, so we need to adjust that. Ten million, uh, million dollars is a lot. Ten million dollars for our police is a lot. Uh, one-third of our budget in reality. So we need to address that and, and. Uh, we need to address certain things that are critical. I mentioned earlier and the public speakers mentioned earlier that. We have a sea rise problem. We have a flooding problem and we have a. Disaster coming at us in the lagoon. We need to fund something. We need to fund it significantly because we need to start now. Any day now, we can lose our access to Malibu. And it's not a joke. It almost took out the wall at, at uh, at the pier. That's pretty close to the highway. It's a parking lot away. So we need to get on that. We need to put this in the budget. No matter what you do, there's plenty of things you can eliminate. You don't need studies of sirens. You don't need a lot of stuff here. Uh, so I just hope you think of the citizens first. And what's actually needed. Thank you.
John, that's your time.
Thank you, John.
Our next speaker is Doug Stewart.
You there, Doug?
There we go. Now you got me.
Thank you, Doug.
All right. Uh, good evening, council members and city staff. I'm Doug Stewart, Vice Chair of the Public Safety Commission. My comments tonight are to first thank the council and the staff for responding positively to the Public Safety Commission's recommendations for additional patrol cars. This is one car of two deputies on the early shift and an additional car of two deputy, deputies for the P M shift. The P M shift car is already in service in its trial period of performing crime suppression and the results are stunning. These extra deputies are averaging about one arrest every day. This is at least one person who is a likely cause of mischief at a minimum, if not a likely perpetrator of more serious crimes. The addition of these extra deputies takes us from bare minimum to a level of somewhat proactive in our policing. Additionally, we recommended the incremental addition of a third uh, full motor deputy, which is a half deputy addition. Which is long overdue and will lead to better traffic enforcement in the afternoons. We ask that you reconsider the addition of this half a deputy. It's going to cost about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year and we understand that the money is not growing on trees. But the cost of all this is not cheap. On pages two and fourteen of your package point out, the public safety budget is one point nine three million dollars higher this coming year. It's a staggering sum for our small city, but reflective of your commitment to protect our residents and visitors. And the extra avenue we have been, extra revenue we've been so fortunate to see coming in. But this is buying more than just extra deputies. The Public Safety Commission covers more than just the police department, sheriff's department. We also look at the fire liaison which is being added, half, half a person, money for homeless cleanups. And the start of the beach team on May first, all are in your added cost. I think I can speak for all of Malibu to express our appreciation for you seeing this as a top priority and making it possible to accomplish this coming year. We thank you for your uh, support and uh, look forward to seeing the budget add this extra half a deputy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Who's next?
Our final speaker is Ryan.
Ryan, are you there?
Yes, thank you, City Council. I, I attended both the A N F Administration Finance Committee meeting. And the subsequent Public Safety Commission meeting, which were um, held on the same day, actually. And Lisa Sokor presented to the A N F uh, meeting and it was holding back on recommending the seven-day-a-week. Uh, staffing of the additional sheriff cars. You know, anyway, being conservative with the money, it's only a couple hundred thousand dollars and you know, budget is humongous. And we've had, uh, well, Paul should know, we've had some crime problems in the city. And we need to address the residents concern and maybe a little less of the, the beach experience concern. With thirty to thirty-five deputies uh, wandering the beach and then our houses are getting broken into in Malibu. And we've having problems with enforcing the short-term rentals and, and overcapacity and noise and. Problems ruining our neighborhoods. So I would recommend that you bite the bullet and fund the seven-days-a-week option of those additional recommended cars. And the price list, uh, Lisa Sokor has it right in front of her. The next is the beach team costs almost nine hundred thousand a year. Um, and the L A County owns and operates those county beaches, just like uh, they do in Topanga. And the county keeps ninety whatever percent, two percent of every tax dollar it collects and gives Malibu its uh, seven percent. And with that ninety-two percent, they can uh, safely. Be required to operate their public beaches and not become a risk and hazard or public nuisance to the city of Malibu. And it's really not appropriate or fair to ask your liaison to comment on these financial matters. These are the county administrative officers, uh, bailiwick. And uh, it, the cost needs to be justified, especially the time and half that was finally confirmed just this evening. There is no nexus, by the way, to the uh, revenue from the Zuma Beach Parking Lot to the beach team. That um, let's get that deal out in the open in transparency, um, council. It's, I brought it up many times. The city voters impose the ten percent parking tax and it applies to the Zuma Beach Lot as everything else. It's not folklore. Um, and I know this predates Lisa's time with the city, that it's not tradition, that it was tit-for-tat. The parking tax is a voter-imposed tax and it's compliant with state law. Film permit revenue also needs to be proposed and put on the ballot for residents to vote on that there be a revenue generating cost. Maybe it's five hundred dollars for live film uh, permitting per day in the city of Malibu to help our uh, economic budget problems. So I would encourage you to place that on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I believe we're, that's the, all the public comment. I saw some hands earlier, but I don't see any now. I didn't know one of them was Bruce. So Bruce, would you like to start?
Well, actually, I just, I just have a quick question to begin with, Natalie. Here's some other comments. Um, Lisa, could you put, did you have a, a slide that showed the ten-year revenue and the ten-year expenses as an aggregate?
Um, no, we have an aggregate of revenue. We don't have expenditures.
Okay, okay. And, and for future purposes, it would be helpful to me that, your presentation was great. I appreciate it. I, I, every time we've had these presentations, I've appreciated them. It'd be great if we could get the PowerPoint as part of our package. So that we could be following along and making notes on it if necessary, uh, as opposed to just getting it on the screen. So for future purposes.
Got you. We're usually developing it like as the meet, right before the meeting. Okay, we can, we could do that.
So I'll hold off on my other comments till I hear some other people have to say, Paul.
I saw, I see Karen's hand.
Paul, um, thi- this may not change the budget, but I think it's worth considering. Regarding code enforcement. Uh, I don't know, Steve, if you're gonna take a crack at this or um, or who, but. Is it worth exploring rearranging the shifts or rotating the shifts? So that somebody's weekend, and it doesn't have to be the same person all the time. So that somebody's weekend, for example, is Monday, Tuesday or Tuesday, Wednesday. So that we have coverage on Saturday and Sunday or Friday night and Saturday and Sunday. It just doesn't seem that difficult to do. I know, I'm sure nobody wants to do it uh, as a full-time gig. But if that could be rotated, it might solve some problems.
I see that Lisa wants to answer that question.
No, not to step on Steve, but because of historically, he doesn't necessarily have the background, but we do currently. Um, have shifts of code enforcement staff that do work on, do like alternate weekend shifts. Um, so that is happening now. Um, I don't know how much nighttime is happening. That might be something to explore. But I do want to point out that um, what is proposed in front of you actually adds another code enforcement body. So that we could even do a more robust job of that rotation. So um, it leaves the code enforcement manager and then three um, code enforcement officers. Who could be deployed as necessary.
Okay, that, that helps Lisa, but I think um, as you said. Not having evening coverage just leaves us uh, you know, just open to too many problems.
I'm gonna, Steve has his hand up. I think he may have an answer or some input for us.
Well, first I was thinking mayor and there's the council, um, and thank you Lisa, you took the words right out of my mouth. I had, had some discussions with the, with our code enforcement staff and actually um, to, to council member Ferris part, a question. That was actually one of the first questions that I posed to them is, you know, do we have the option for doing weekend and nighttime enforcement? And of course, the answer I got back is yes, they, they will do that and they can do that. Um, I, I understand where you're coming from and, and without getting too far ahead. Uh, of any conversation, uh, that is an area that was already on my radar in terms of sitting down with the staff and trying to explore. Uh, how we might be able to shift some of those resources around that we can get some of that coverage where I think we, we probably do need it. Of course, it's uh, as you mentioned, yeah, you have to be very careful there in terms of how you work that out, roll that out. Most people don't want to volunteer for nighttime and weekend coverage, uh, but I think it's something that we uh, could explore and that we should explore. And be happy to look into that and report back to council. And if I have the floor, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to add a couple of comments to the, to the staff presentation. Again, thank Lisa and uh, the uh, members of the A N F Committee and everybody who put this budget together. Uh, this is not my work. This is the work of, of everybody else up here in this room. Uh, and of course, poor Lisa has then had the added duty of then going through and trying to explain to me. How all this came about and give me all the history and all that. So uh, double thanks to Lisa for that. And just, I know the council is aware of this, but I would remiss if I didn't mention it for the public. Uh, just really two real quick things there. Uh, just going forward. Uh, you know, we looked at that one side that showed our total reserves. We're going from forty-three million to thirty-three million. That is very significant. That would be if you're, if you had forty-three thousand in your savings account and one year it took it down to thirty-three, you. You would be, so that would be something you would be definitely paying very close attention to. And then, of course, the other reason why we're at a balanced projection going forward for next year is the use of that five point three million, which. Which the city was able to set aside. Uh, that's not gonna be a luxury that we're going to be able to pull from again and again in the future. Uh, it's again, it's fantastic that we have it for this year and I think the city's been very smart in how it has budgeted its monies going forward. But I think it does, and I hate to be an alarmist, but raise some alarm bells for the city going forward, even as soon as next fiscal year. Where you can see some of these things are going to start hitting home uh, for the city and it's gonna be a little bit more difficult, I think, going forward. Uh, to be able to uh, come up with the proposed balanced budget. So. I just, I know the council is aware of that, but I want to make sure that the public and everybody else is aware of some of the financial pressures that we see um, coming forward. Uh, again, even with the addition of the, of the, the officers uh, for this first year, if the, if the council put that in the budget. We get a discounted rate the first year. The second year, that discount goes away. So all these things do start to creep up and uh, and more than creep up, uh, we'll be staring them right in the face of starting the following fiscal year. Uh, the way things are looking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Thank you for the caution. Uh, I don't, Bruce, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to segue on something once Steve just said, because that was my first note that I wanted, that I have here. Th- this is, just to be clear, this is not a balanced budget. It's an unbalanced budget that uses reserves and other internal sources to fill holes. Uh, and we're fortunate to have the reserves so that we don't need to borrow to fill the shortfall. But that doesn't make it a balanced budget. It's just because, you know, best practices are to have a balanced budget. We absolutely do not have a balanced budget. We are eight million dollars in the hole, ten percent off of a balanced budget. And um, that's, that's not gonna be sustainable. We real, you know, uh, if, if it were up to me alone. I would go through this with a red pen and I would cut ten percent of the expenses to get us balanced. Um, I know that I don't have and we don't have that luxury. So later I'm gonna have some comments, some suggestions for some things to knock off the budget. But I, I don't want people to be deceived into thinking because we've got. But I I don't want people to be deceived into thinking because we've got money in reserve that we can use to fill a hole, that we have a balanced budget. We do not have a balanced budget.
Thank you, Bruce. Lisa?
And I would just, I would agree with that. We don't. Um, it's not quite eight million because the eight million deals with capital projects too, so some of that. But it but it is, it's five million, um and that's a lot. And some of the things that we are proposing in this, and as Steve McClary mentioned, are going to get more expensive in the following year. And while those, I think I mentioned it in my presentation, but the um, you know, those public safety um sheriff contract uh personnel are a lot. And we're getting them at a discounted rate. And then next year, they get that uh administrative fee tacked on to them, which, you know, again, could be another just half a million dollars on top of everything. Not to mention all all the other increases. So I do agree that um it is not balanced. We 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 were aware of that and that's why we set money aside this year, but that isn't um a sustainable plan moving forward, and we hope the revenues will increase, but we don't know.
Lisa, I agree. We're walking through a dark and scary part of the woods, and we've been walking through it since December of two thousand eighteen. And I'm hoping that we are gonna come into a beautiful meadow soon. But Karen has her hand up.
Okay, not not to beat the obvious point to death, but yeah, um, you know, we had the Edison settlement money. Then we used our reserve. Now we're using our reserve again. And yeah, that's not sustainable. The Woolsey fee waiver. You know, as much as we all, I think, had our hearts in the right place, wanted to help people as much as possible, get back into their homes. Nine million dollars on our budget is
Yeah.
probably more than we can afford. Um, I know uh Mikey and Steve talked about shortening uh the timeline on that, uh making the deadline sooner. I wouldn't disagree. But as long as we're talking about money, I think we have to acknowledge the, I think it's three point two million dollars in Metro funds that the city got to um use in the purchase of land, which included the island parcel or the triangle lot. I I can't see giving that money back to Metro. And on top of that, there's the revenue that we would get from the use of the lot when it's finished. Um, and on top of that, the parking problems that it can solve. And I think I think the idea of doing it as an overlay district uh is probably the best approach. And I didn't know until today, when Lisa and I spoke, that when Metro gave that grant, they required the city to put a covenant on that parcel. So we need to think clearly about that. And and I will say, I thought that the plan with the landscaping and the permeability and and the whole concept, John's raising his hand. Okay, I'll stop. Okay, this is about money. Never mind. Anyway, I just think we really need to think about that 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 the Metro funds and that and that lot. Okay, that's that.
Thank you, Karen. Steve?
Yes, in the A and F committee, one of the things we talked about with Lisa is, you know, we're gonna have to start addressing this relatively quickly. So we had suggested that maybe in some early part of July, she puts together a meeting. That we'll have a chance to sit down and talk about, you know, are there new revenue opportunities we can take a look at? What might they be? What what do we think they're gonna generate? But I think the real thrust of that meeting is gonna be to start taking a look at costs and figuring out what we're gonna have to cut. Uh, you know, I've I placing your bets on revenue you don't have is risky. Uh, the only thing you'd be really certain of is when you reduce your cost, you know what you're gonna have when you get to the end. So, you know, my suggestion is that if we can, early part of July, get Lisa to put together a meeting, let's sit down and start talking about stuff. And between now and then, I think each of us have to sit down and think about how we're gonna get this bu- budget back to a balanced state, because that's what we're gonna have to do. That's it.
Thank you, Steve. Mikey?
Um, I just just wanted to add quickly that uh discuss the fee waiver. What I think I brought or Steve brought, one of us brought forward was ending at twelve thirty-one. And I think that captures that last group of people dealing with um their lawsuit issues. When somehow somebody posted, I guess, in social media that we were trying to end it immediately. And I got quite a few calls on that. And when I said, no, actually, what we thought we discussed at this meeting tonight was ending at twelve thirty-one, every the few people that called me, maybe it was four or five, all said, oh, great. So it felt like the lawsuit people are were, which are some of the most needy people that, you know, if we end at twelve thirty-one, I think we're we've done it, and that impacts our budget. You know, at least two and a half million dollars going forward on an annual basis, as much as three million dollars. So um I think magic bullet that clears everything, but it goes a long ways. And I would suggest that we uh we we head that direction.
Thank you, Mikey. I think that's a good plan. Uh, Bruce has got his hand raised. Bruce?
All right, thanks. So one or two general comments and I have some specific um proposals. So I, general comment, as a new council member, I found it difficult to make informed decisions respecting this budget without multi-year historical data reflecting revenue and expenses. That's why I asked if there was a, there was a um slide that uh that would really be helpful to see, and Lisa and Steve and I discussed this the other day, it'd be really helpful to see a normalized without extraordinary expense or revenue historical analysis, because it would really help identify where where our true trends are. Because right now it's hard to do based on what is in essence, three anecdotal years. They've they've all been extraordinary. Um, so I really can't get my arms around this budget at all. As far as the the specifics, um, safety is absolutely required, safety first. And, you know, I I think we have to bite this bullet and pay the extra money to bring in additional sheriff patrols. Um, I would support the motorcycle officer also, even though that's not in this unbalanced budget. I think that's important. Public safety is telling us we need it. I I I'm not gonna second guess that. I do query how well we're negotiating our agreements with LASD. Because, you know, I don't know if this is just, here's our price, take it or leave it, or we have some negotiation, but you know, the county keeps cutting their budget. I would think that there's room for negotiation. It's not just a question of, okay, you want two more officers, it's gonna cost you another million one. Um, and I don't know that such, there's not, there hasn't been any discussion or explanation of how these numbers have been developed. So I'm hoping that we're having um informed and experienced negotiators go to the table. And there are people that 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 have that expertise. So I hope that's happening. I think we can hold off hiring a third city clerk. That's, I don't know, it's not a huge amount, but it's 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 probably approaching a hundred thousand dollars in the budget. I think we can knock that out. Um, our budget includes seventy-two thousand five hundred for a demographer for and other things for the um district district elections. We're not doing district elections. I mean, if it turns out we conclude down the line that we have to go that way, we can have it, we can adjust the budget. But I would take the seventy-two thousand five hundred out of the budget because it's for something we're not doing. Um, homeless services include three hundred thousand dollars to fund the outreach team. I'd like to understand what we're getting for three hundred thousand dollars. Um, what the outreach team does for the benefit of Malibu and its residents. But, you know, there's there's another area where there's potential savings. I don't support cutting the Woolsey Woolsey Fire Fee Waiver Program. And I'm not sure this is really the time or place to be doing that. I think that would appropriately be a separate agenda item, because it's already something we approved as a separate agenda item. I don't know that we have the authority when adjusting the budget to make that decision, but for the record, I I don't support it. Um, I think the costs of it are overestimated. Um, I also believe, I I think the former council that settled the Woolsey Fire litigation didn't do the best job of getting the the right amount of money from Wool- from SCE. And I don't think the the few residents who still are depending on the fee waiver should have to pay the cost of us not getting a settlement that included the entirety of it. Because in theory, we should have gotten, we shouldn't be paying for that. SCE should be paying for that. And to the extent we didn't make SCE pay for it, we shouldn't make our residents pay for it. Especially the ones who are still waiting on getting permits, because they're the ones who could least afford to rebuild. The people that already have their permits are the people who could most readily afford to rebuild. They got the benefit of the program. And the program was never about money. It was about doing something for our residents. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that. The other area where there's there's room for reductions, I would just take, again, take a red pen and do them across the board. We have dramatic increases in every department under professional services, contract personnel, travel and training, advertising and noticing, dues and membership, printing. I don't know why we're doing a hell of a lot of printing in the year two thousand twenty-one, um publications. I I understand that a lot of these things need, and office supplies, these things need to be, you need to have them. But, you know, knock them down, ten, twenty percent each. Make the departments make do with a short, with a smaller budget. That's what we all do when the income's not coming in. We tighten our belts and we spend less. There are things that we think we need, that when we don't have enough money to buy them, we come to realize we don't really need them. They were just good things to have. Um, so I would just slash some of those expenses. Take a look at non-essential community services. I mean, you know, it's great to provide them, but again, it's 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 typically the kinds of things that in government business, the first, one of the first things to go are community services when you don't have the money. They can come back when we have the money. And then the last thing I'll say is on the work plan priorities. Uh, I don't know if there's a rule that we need to say, these are our top three, and these are the ones we're gonna focus on, and everything else isn't on the list for this year. But, you know, Malibu's rural character and environment, that's the mission statement and the vision statement. That's what we're about. And sure, we have to do public safety, and I know school separation is important. And Woolsey Fire rebuilds clearly important, but, you know, they're all important. It's not really one's more important than the other. They're all important. They're all what we're all about. I really don't like sacrificing things that we need to be doing to keep our rural character and to preserve the environment. But maybe that's one of the things that when we have to tighten the belt, we have to tighten the belt, and we can't do them right now. But I I I I really encourage us knocking some of these expenses off. There, maybe we can save a half million dollars if we do.
Thank you, Bruce. I think that I I just wanna touch on a little historical thing about uh fire rebuilds. Typically, the county uh allowed fire rebuilds and allowed you to go under their fire rebuild ordinance that guaranteed you the right to rebuild for only two years after a fire. We are the first city, the first municipality anywhere that I've been able to find who has waived any of the fees for a fire rebuild. So it was an interesting thing. We tried very hard. Uh, I'm glad that there's over three hundred planning approvals out of the four hundred and seventy-five homes that we lost. I'm glad that there's a, you know, a hundred and ninety permits out there. And I'm glad that there's thirty-one houses that have been finished. But at some point, uh, that becomes the biggest hole in the boat. And I think we have to look at it going forward. I'm not suggesting we do anything about it tonight. What I'd like to see us do tonight is uh move this forward so that we can work towards a June twenty-fourth meeting and get a budget passed in time for the the next calendar year, the next fiscal year, sorry. Lisa?
So I think, you know, I I would just like some direction. Because to put together the next and what should be the final iteration. And I understand where Bruce is coming from and the because we've done it, right? So that's what we did last year. We cut and we cut some more and we can do that. Part of our, you know, we're adding positions because we cut them out. And now we're being asked again to provide services, to provide programs. We're adding code enforcement because we're hearing we need more staff to deal with code enforcement. Recreation, um, community service programs had been, you know, almost nonexistent. Or we were trying, we were doing as much as we could. We are anticipating that there will be clamoring for them in that position we started as of January, that recreation assistant position. Fire liaison, we're asking, you know, there there is a lot. This is gonna be a heavy fire season. We already saw when Jerry was the incumbent in that position, he was overloaded in terms of monitoring the weekend, providing the home assessments, um, all all those tasks. You know, again, I I've said it before, but staff and I, Steve is probably learning, but staff is incredibly like de- depthless, right? We don't have depth. We're trying to do everything. Um, and the staff we have are doing an amazing job. And um, but they are, they are running on fumes. And and so, and you all, I mean, even if we're cutting out programs or or trying to delay them a little bit, it's still a heavy lift. That this work plan is a heavy lift. So we're trying to balance that. And yes, we could, we could take a red pencil and and cut things back, but there are big ticket items like the public safety patrol stuff that is, you know, I'm hearing from everybody that you really want. So I um, I can do some cutting. We also know we set aside this money, maybe what I, maybe there's a target, right? So maybe it's not using the bulk of it. Maybe it's using half of it, um, some of it. Sort of as we plan ahead for the future, because I'd like to wrap my hands around consensus from you all to to sort of chart a path forward and and adjust numbers accordingly.
Well, just to get some guidance from me. Last summer, the public safety was, we had nothing but problems. And and I definitely don't want to have anything to do with answering my phone because people are having this this turn into another summer from hell. So I definitely want the public safety component there. I think it's essential because of the increased crime that we have the people out here at night to make them realize that Malibu is not the place that you go if you wanna steal things or God forbid, kill somebody. This is, this is not an easy target of opportunity. I don't, I don't want anything to do with us doing that. Uh, the other thing that I'm counting on is that real estate taxes keep going up. The the amount we get from real estate taxes keeps going out. And if we have anything close to a normal year as far as restaurants being able to produce things. And then I'm looking forward to uh something like Norm's Building, which would be helpful to us as well. And these are, these are things that you know, are coming. This is, our our belt has been tightened for three years now. So I I think that we're coming out of it. I would like to see us the idea of of going in and cutting all the programs that people want from the city, I think is a bad idea. I don't think that, I don't think the people who've been homeschooling their kids and not able to put them in And not able to put them into any of the programs would be happy. If we told them we've, we've cut that program. None of the sports stuff is happening. None of the other things are happening. I don't think we are. We can see the precipice from here, but I don't think we're s- looking over the edge personally.
So another piece, just to get some guidance on, and again, I don't have, as I mentioned, it, the. The final rule on the American Rescue Plan is not final. Um, it's dr- in draft form and we don't have the guidance, but there is an opportunity. For us to potentially use that to fund some of these positions that we're adding back. Um, if the council is so inclined. I can try to show, I can show that in the budget doc, in the next round of the budget document. If that is something that you wanna consider, if you'd rather wait until we really get final guidance. We can bring it back at a later date. Um, but that is, again, money that we can use over the next several years. That could help offset our expenditures. I mean, conversely, we could, you know, not fill positions. You know, but again, like I mentioned, staff is, stuff's kinda drowning. We have a lot on our plates.
Right. Mikey?
Um, I, I have a note on that. I agree. If we can use some of those funds for positions, it probably makes sense as we gap our way through this. And, and recover. I sense, I sense recovering too, but with that, you know, but that doesn't put money in the bank. So um, I could see funding that way. I think it would be probably though prudent to have a. You know, try and have the council look at a real breakdown when it's finally done. I keep reading up on it too, and it's. Feels like still a bit of a fuzzy target sometimes. And um, but I think you're on point there. It does look like um, we can find some positions. Or i- i- if, if that runs out of bandwidth, certainly, we can. Help out the community in other ways. It looks like it's definitely to be directed towards services to help community. So, and like you said, it could fund it for a number of years, which is, yeah, maybe it's sort of a band-aid. But as our finances recover, it's not a bad band-aid because it goes away, it goes away.
Do we? Have we gotten a copy of? Who is developing the guidance for what the money can be spent on and when will we have that available?
It's the feds.
Yeah, it's the Treasury Department, the U- U S Treasury, um, and it is on their wa- I can send a link. It's, it's long. And again, as I said, um, it's in its comment period, so there's lots of questions being asked all across the country. Um, trying to dial into exactly what is allowable and is not. Um, and the, and, and one of the webinars I heard, had last Thursday, they said, oh, and then small cities. You're gonna get something later, which I haven't seen yet. So I don't know if that means it's totally different. Or um, just gonna be a little different, hard to say.
And, and I think it's a, maybe it's a function of being on council longer, and I could be wrong. But my mailbox, I get emails on this, these funds daily. I mean, links to people, everyone's trying to figure it out. And I think as I remember when I was a newer council mayor, I wasn't on as many lists as somehow I'm on now. So I'm not sure if you're getting them all. So if I see any, okay, I'll, I'll be glad to send, send them out to. Or ones that I think are good to Lisa to send out to.
Yeah, I would, I would be careful too. I can send you the direct treasury ones because I know, Mikey, some of the ones that we're receiving. Are actually like sale, like companies who are pitching a product. And they want to help us plan our dollars because they've got some great, you know, way to plan them.
The treasury looks great.
Okay.
Okay, Bruce?
Yeah, we, we're not gonna know what we could spend those dollars on until we know what we could spend those dollars on. I think prudence dictates that we not assume we can spend them on anything. Until we're told what we can spend them on. For purposes of budgeting.
Well, the good part, Bruce, is we've got ninety million dollars worth of expenses. There must be something in there we can spend. I would hope. How much more guidance would you like? Bruce, Steve?
I think. I think we gotta give her an answer on the additional uh. Motorcycle, half a motorcycle.
Yes.
That they brought up. We had, you know, I think that's a good idea. We gotta put that in. Uh, was there any other big ones you were hanging out there, Lisa? I think that was the only.
That was the, that was really the, the, the one that had a dollar figure to it. I guess from my perspective, I don't know. If, do you, is there a sense that you want me to? Look at doing reductions on expenditures? If so, um, I think it's gonna be hard to come up with a. A balanced budget where revenues and operating expenses are matched this year. But is there some, like our, if it's five million in terms of general fund, is there some balance in there? That everyone wants me to shoot for and, and what would those things you would be that you want me to cut? I can certainly do a cut for. Um, the things that Bruce was talking about, we can pair brack, training and all of that. That's not gonna give us millions. That will give us some amount. Um, I don't know, um, what else might be on your, you know, if we're definitely funding the sheriff stuff. Are there other things you don't want us to do? Most of our professional services. Um, increases are based on things that have to happen and we can do. I can maybe outline those a little more. I guess I just need to know what, if you want me to cut. If the, if the whole council wants me to cut expenditures, what are those expenditures? Cause so far I've heard ad and then talking, right? Like we're adding public safety stuff and I agree with you. It's very important. So I'm not trying to say no to that, but what are the big ticket items that we would cut?
Eve?
Yeah, I think, look, we're gonna have to. We've got to be smart about this. Uh, we're gonna have to, you know. If, if I were doing this, I would go back and take, I think you're right. I think we've got some projects on the, the, the staff is working on. Which is just sucking up an enormous amount of time. I'd like to get something that says. You know, what are those things that I can, I can reduce or, or cut back on to make the staff's life a little bit easier? And at the same time, save some money uh, out of the budget. And I think the other thing we may learn, you know, we saw a kick. From the last A and F meeting we had, so where we are today, cause we saw some additional revenue coming in. You know, by the time you get to the end of June, the picture may become a little bit clearer, okay? Uh, I, you know, I am hoping that the recovery is gonna be a little more robust than. So the projections, okay, but it's a guess. And, and I, and I think at the end. If, if you could take a look at some of those things, but I do think that sometimes that early July, the council has to sit down. And, and make some tough decisions. We're gonna have to take a look at what we got, what we think we wanna, what we. We, we may make some people unhappy, Paul, that just may be the way it goes. But we gotta get a budget, it's gonna be balanced, and you can't wait to do that until next year in May. Right, you know, you better know where the hell you're going and be sure that you can get there. You do not wanna be screwed around at the end trying to find additional money or cut costs that aren't gonna make any difference. That's. All I got.
Bruce has had his hand up very patiently. And I'm uh, I'm pretty, pretty excited about the December thirty-first date for, for the other thing. But Bruce?
I really like this feature now that I'm able to use it. Makes it a lot easier to be patient. Um, so, I mean, you know. We're, we're never gonna get this, but balance. We're not gonna, we're not gonna knock five million dollars off. There's, there's no question about that. So the question is just what can we knock off? And, and my, you know, my preference would be the guidance would be just. Knock off as much as you feel you comfortably can. I've given some examples. I don't know what others think about them, you know, just that, I, I think I got about a quarter of a million dollars off the top. Of some of the things I mentioned, like not a third clerk, no demographer, reducing the um, staff, the. Office supplies and travel expenses and training across the board by like ten percent or fifteen percent. That'll, that'll get us a few hundred thousand dollars. It pays for the uh, motorcycle officer that we're adding. It pays for a little bit of the um, additional police cars, or sheriff's cars. But, uh, you know, I, I, I just think we need to shoot for trying to get at least another million or two off the top of this if possible. And I know community services are important, and I know you don't make people happy by not giving them. Um, those services, but those are not the essential services. Those are the, you know, it's cosmetic surgery versus necessary surgery. Those are cosmetic surgery, um, unfortunately, and those are the things that governments usually look to cut when they ha- when they don't have money. Thanks.
Bruce, I'm in favor of cutting the demographer until we find out how Santa Monica's appeal goes. And if, if the appeal with Santa Monica goes well. We can, can't wait forever to do the demographer because we, we don't uh. We're no longer a target if Santa Monica wins. So that's seventy thousand there, so.
How much is the third clerk, Lisa?
Oh, um, I don't have that in front of me. Um, I can maybe pull it up.
In the neighborhood of a hundred thousand?
Probably. I, I'm gonna say. That department, I mean, we added it at mid-year because they're underwater with all of the work they have. Um, you know, the minutes, Kelsey's on here, she can speak. She's probably sweating now.
I think we have a potential morale problem.
Yeah, I'm, you know. I, there's been a lot that, you know, in terms of public records requests, handling all the meetings. Um, dealing with, uh, oh, here she comes.
Yes.
Hey, Kelsey?
Hello, so some of the uh, justations we gave at mid-year for adding additional city clerks is that, you know, we continue to see. An increase in public records requests over the years. We've also taken on helping process recorded documents. For applicants, including Woolsey Fire rebuilds. We're doing about two hundred and seventy-four of those in the last fiscal year. And that was about thirty-four full business days of work in a year. City council meetings continue to become more labor-intensive and complex. I, um, we haven't totally figured out our, our plan to return to the chambers, but I expect that's gonna continue to be a complex project.
I, I agree. I think we are, we're looking at, at, and again, depending on what the council decides at a future meeting, I won't go totally into it. With John, but I think it will be very staff-intensive, um, at least for the short term. Um, how we run meetings in the future, um, while we navigate this end of the pandemic and what that means for larger gatherings. Um, like already, these Zoom meetings are incredibly staff-intensive, more than you would actually think. Um, they're all behind the scenes making it happen. Um, and I think that will continue and be even more. Um, the other thing I did wanna mention, cause I mentioned it in my presentation, was depending on what the council decides. Um, related to the committee, uh, to deal with homelessness, um, and the issues surrounding that. And the, um, that really is a position that's not in the budget right now. Um, probably a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars full up with um, costs. But again, if we're adding something like that, we really need help making it happen. Um, I think, you know, the expectations are high on what staff needs to accomplish and. Um, get done. And so whenever we talk about adding that piece of it. We were already ramping up those, um. Those tasks and then adding a, a full committee of ten, um, will just sort of. I think requires us to have something. So I just want you to, again, that hundred and twenty-seven isn't in the budget. We, we'd need to figure out how to add it.
We've got Karen followed by Bruce.
Mikey second.
Is Mikey in there?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's the way to fix and see. You should be able to see everyone.
Yeah, it is. Now I can. Now I can. I'm sorry. Your hand blended into your uh, your California. Sorry.
Um, okay, so I know we recently went through uh, fees and fines. And I know we voted on them, but are we leaving any money on the table there, Lisa, that you can think of?
I, I mean, the only thing, I know we've talked about it very specifically. Is that our planning costs are not by any stretch, full cost recovery. Um, but then again, those are the things that the council has already weighed in on. Where we've kept them low or we've, we're lowering them, right? Like appeals fees and all of those. Um. So I don't, I don't, other than that, I think we've tried pretty hard to make sure we're capturing our costs.
Okay, so we're losing money. On what the council has agreed to do with planning costs.
Yes.
Okay, that's on us.
Thank you, Karen. Mikey?
Um, I, I wanna bring back a conversation I think we had at A and F, and I think. Steve initiated it, but um, there was some thoughts on ways to make more money too that we probably should add to the mix. Such as it could be a sales tax hike. It could be, there's all sorts of mechanisms. If we need to pay for something, there are ways cities like us do it. So um, the T O T, obviously, you know, that's gonna eventually bring in about a million dollars a year. So there's that. Um, I, I think you are gonna look at maybe um. What it would be to do a quarter cent or a half cent. Sales tax and we, you, I think you mentioned another mechanism or two, as I remember. And uh, I think we should throw that into the mix at least for the council to look at. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm up to Bruce, and then Karen waved again.
Yes, I, I like the, the tax issue, cause I, I think for the most part, the sales taxes aren't being paid by our residents. They're being paid by. People that are coming into Malibu. That would be great if they could do that. Um, just another area that we might be to shave some money off is we've got over half a million dollars built in here for. Um, outreach, homeless outreach and um, cleanup of homeless encampments. If we do better enforcement, nuisance enforcement, we can get the um, residents whose properties are the ones that we're cleaning up. To clean up their properties and not spend a quarter of a million dollars for them. And uh, you know, I don't know what we're getting for the three hundred thousand dollars in outreach, but maybe there's some money that could be knocked off there too.
Thank you, Bruce. Karen?
Okay, so a sales tax increase, we're talking about a ballot measure. So then we need to run a campaign. And. You know, do our best to make sure it passes. Um, Santa Monica has passed those twice, but I know they ran major campaigns for them. And Santa Monica's sales tax is. Infinitely larger than Malibu's sales tax. So you know, a quarter percent, a half percent on our sales tax, I'm looking for the numbers here right now. Maybe you can find it faster than I can, Lisa.
Oh, um.
I, I don't think that gets us a whole lot of money.
We can, we can calculate it, um. Not sure, have to look.
And it's probably best discussed as you, in the item where we talk about revenue opportunities for.
Okay, all right. Well, I just had to say, I just don't think there's a ton of money there, but thank you.
Why would we need to run a campaign? We didn't spend a penny on getting the T O T increase.
We don't pay that.
T O T is only paid by visitors. I mean, I'm not sure how often a Malibu resident stays in a Malibu hotel.
And we didn't have a campaign, cause I totally forgot and didn't do anything, and that's my bad.
Mikey, that was, that was a way to fail upward. Failing to advertise that, everybody just voted for it. I mean, I love it. So. Are we running out of steam here? It's ten minutes to eleven. Do you have enough ideas to work with, Lisa?
I think so. I saw Steve Euring raising his hand.
I, you know, I, and and we, we've looked at knocking out seventy thousand dollars here or fifty thousand dollars here. I mean, that's nice. We need big chunks. And I think what we wanna do is think about some of the things we heard the speaker say. We got this beach team, that's nine hundred thousand dollars, and we're taking care of somebody else's property. Should we look at that? Or should we go back to the, this, the county and ask them for more money to help us fund that? I mean, you, we gotta look at some big numbers, cause the small stuff is interesting, but it ain't gonna get you where you wanna go. That's.
I, I will say about the beach team that um, Riva did approach uh, Supervisor Kewell's office. Like a year, year and a half ago and talked about that with them, and they basically said, no thanks.
Yeah, well, that made me no thanks.
I mean, you know, I, and I think, again, this came out of the city's desire to have enforcement. Um, and additional enforcement to just keep the peace on the beaches um, in crowded summers. Uh, certainly. And again, we're, we, we just authorized them to go, you know, now through May because, in early May, just because we've experienced. And it makes it better for the residents around. I, but we can certainly revisit it and ask again.
Well, and it started with, with some pretty big incidents too, by the way.
Yeah.
Didn't come out of nowhere.
Yeah.
You know, two hundred trucks out of control doing donuts at Zuma Beach, and that was shocked everybody.
Yeah, the uh, the not having a beach team there experiment was before, be. What created the beach team was we had some very bad behavior. And uh, the citizens didn't want very bad behavior, and they didn't want the people who were attracted to the idea of going there. To do some very bad behavior because. Their very bad behavior was carried on off the beach as well, which is why the beach team is important. The other reason the beach team is important is it's really. They, they do a great job of, of working hard to prevent the leading cause of drowning, which is drinking at the beach. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of, of axing the beach team. I, it would be nice if Sheila decides to give us a parting gift, but. I don't know that that's happening. I'm certainly willing to call Tess and inquire.
Be better to call Sheila.
Lieutenant Braden, I see you're waving at me. Would you like to un, can someone unmute Jim?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
So also in this beach team, a major component of it is parking enforcement throughout Malibu. And. Uh, there is several hundred thousand dollars of parking tickets written from the beach team themselves. So. Part of the funding gets mitigated through the sites written on the parking and stuff, the uh. Which if, if there's no beach team out there, there won't be any revenue from that. So it's not an even, even swap of, of. Sa- saving money. All I would say about it is there's a huge public safety aspect to that. And letting someone sit all day on the beach, even though someone's opinion is all people do is walk around. Well, patrols and showing visible presence on the beaches or in the communities is highly impactful. And it'd be very short sighted to think you're gonna put thousands and thousands of people on a beach. And that they're gonna, going to just choose to do what's appropriate. And uh, that's, that'd be my comment on it. I first had an experience being on the beach and working it. And and dealing with some of the lawlessness or drunken people. Or potential people to get back on the highway drunk. All those aspects need to be looked into. Uh, it's short sightedness when someone just makes flip it comments like it's a nothing. I, I have twenty years' experience with it. So I'll just leave it at that.
I think you're correct, Jim. Bruce?
Yeah, so you know, I, I, Jim makes a good point about the, it's, it's not entirely cost. There's also some i- i- revenue. Uh, but I will say, you know, there's, there's a lot of lore about. The beach team and other things, you know, are we getting the parking lot revenue as a trade-off for having agreed to that? Were we entitled to that in any event because we had a tax um, initiative and we're just providing the beach team? I have to say, and on the abstract, it doesn't make sense if it's not our beach. That we're providing the safety. I mean, it is safety for our residents, it's also safety for ten million people from out of our city. But you know, what, the county doesn't get a free pass, and if, if we're not providing that safety, they have to provide that safety if it's their property. Unless we've made a deal to provide it. So I, I think these kinds of things that we're all told historically. This deal was made and that deal was made. We need to understand the facts a lot better because. There's lore and there's facts, and sometimes what's stated as lore is accurate, and other times it's not. Uh, and it doesn't make sense to me unless we've contractually agreed to. Patrol the beach, that we need to be patrolling someone else's beach. I mean, we're not patrolling the unincorporated areas. Of Malibu either, cause they're not our, ours to patrol. So there may be other areas we can get revenue, but we're not gonna solve that unfortunately by the June. Um, approval anyway. So you know, it's a nice discussion to have, but we're not gonna get it done.
Right? Assume, I think we're grinding to a stop. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Let me ask one question. So home, so, public safety liaison to deal with homelessness, am I trying to put that in the budget? If you all are moving forward to adding this committee, do you not want, I don't know how we handle. All of those things without, but that's the one thing I need direction on, and then I think I have enough direction for the rest of it.
I'm sure we could take a vote on that, Karen.
Oh, are we talking about the outreach worker?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
You are forming, we had already talked about having on the uh, at mid-year, we punted. And move that to the future, and now as you're contemplating adding a committee, this uh, committee of ten. Uh, I really, at this point, I, my recommendation would be we need someone to help in the public safety. Department to, to move all those items forward, and so that would be adding a position that does not currently exist. In the proposed budget you have before you. So whether I add that for the final version or not is, I guess, is what I'm asking now.
I think we should just leave that out until we decide what we're doing with that committee, because I, I mean, Susan works with the working group right now. Presumably, the time she spends for the working group will now be time she spends for the task force. I don't, I, I'm not sure once we flush. Touch this out, we're gonna need a, a whole additional person to provide support for that task force.
Uh, that's up for you all to decide. I think Susan would disagree, and here she comes.
Hi, Susan. Yeah, I know, and I, I understand Bruce, what you're saying, but the difference being if we create this committee, task force, brownback body. It does require an extensive amount of additional work. You have creation of agendas, you have creation of staff reports, then also um, formally working with all these people. And I can tell you right now, as it is, dealing with homelessness is a full-time job. And there's just not time. There's things I, I can't get to because every day I get emails, right, just like you do. There's an encampment here, an encampment there, and an encampment there. And if that's all I had to do, I could probably manage that pretty effectively, but unfortunately, it's not the only job I have. And this is, I know, a big safety issue for a lot of people. It's a fire safety issue. And I can see it's not being managed to the level that it really needs. Cause we just don't have the capacity. It's, it's labor intensive to do this, so. That already, even without a commission or a task force or whatever we gotta call it. We're already overwhelmed with trying to manage. The requests for assistance from the community to deal with encampments. As it is right now, and I can tell you, there's several encampments right now I haven't even been able to get to. Because of other um, responsibilities that I also have.
Thank you, Susan. You've just made a very good argument for having an A S L so we can actually involve the sheriffs. So.
Do you have an A S L?
What?
We're gonna have that debate another time. We could do that with A S L.
I'm sure we will have that debate another time. But right now, Lisa, do you have enough information to go home?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Will you take the role? Kelsey?
Yes, Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes, and I wanna thank staff for all their hard work on this. I know it's, it's been a huge lift and really, really appreciate. All this hard work through a really kind of a difficult time too, so thank you.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
I wanna thank staff too. It's really nice when everything is coming in and we have tons of money and everybody can. Up. Uh, decide they wanna program and we all get the programs we want. And it's easy and everybody loves it and it feels good and, and uh, right now, we're on the end of three years of not having that. So I'm sorry that this has been difficult, and I am in favor of, of adjourning, but thank you very much.
Motion carries, you are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Adios.